...of our presentation. Each week, we invite young people in to speak to council. In many countries in the world, when adults pass each other, they don't ask, "How are you?" They ask, "How are the children?" And that's one of the questions we continually have to ask ourselves is, "How are the children?" Because we know if the children in a community are well, if they have health care, they have a roof over their head, they have a full stomach, and caring adults in their lives, they're much more likely to be successful, and thus, the community is more successful. This morning, I'd like to welcome a scout troop to our celebration of young people. Brian Honstein and Anton Matzek, could you come up? They're both Boy Scouts, and they're also students at Wilson High School. And they're joining us today in order to learn more about how the city works, and how to earn credit toward a badge related to communication. Brian would like to address the council about an issue that's important to him and his fellow students. And Brian and Anton, I'd like to welcome you both. And could you also introduce the people you're with, so they could stand up and we could recognize them?
Yeah. First, Braden Lambert, stand up. And then Scout Millicent. And then who's back there? And then Nikki. And then who's behind the post over there? Oh, Ben Sherman's over there.
Thank you. Go ahead and just say your name when you speak, and it's your turn.
My name is Brian Honstein, and I'm going to be talking about how hard it is to take public transportation to my school. I live approximately 3.8 miles away from Wilson High School, and it takes me about 15 minutes to travel from my house to school. I have to walk about a mile every day with a 20-pound backpack on a highway with no sidewalks. There is a solution. I could take the 43 and get to school about half an hour early, because then I'll have to wake up at 5:30 every morning. I take the 44 once I walk a mile, and I get directly to school. I think that if they added a 43 time, then I could take the 43 from my house to the bus stop, and other kids in my neighborhood could also do that.
Thank you. Did you want to say anything?
I didn't really have anything. I'm kind of sleepy this morning.
Okay. So what will this do for your Boy Scout badge in terms of coming to council or City Hall?
Our requirement for this badge was just to come to a meeting, see how you guys function as a council, and take notes on the issues that you guys are discussing, and the different sides of the issues, and which of you guys support or reject your sides on the issue.
Very good. Well, we've got a lot of interesting issues today, so I hope you brought lots of pencils and paper.
Yeah.
Good. Let's give these young men and our Boy Scouts a hand. Call City Council to order. Carla, please call the roll.
Adams?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Leonard Saltzman?
Here.
Potter?
Here. I'd like to remind folks that prior to offering public testimony to the City Council, a lobbyist must declare which lobbying entity they are authorized to represent. Please read the first communication.
Item 1608, request of Carol Seema to address council regarding Montevilla in action.
Please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning. And when you speak, please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Carol L. Seema, and I'll do this as quickly as I can. I am not a person seeking the limelight. I am a person who could not stand the situation we were living with. My husband and I have lived in our home for 38 years. This past year, we experienced an invasion into our community. We raised four children in our home. We had a bunch of, we have a bunch of wonderful grandchildren. In February of this year, we had a false spring. We had been working in our yard and had gone inside. My husband came to the back door and asked me to call the police. At 11:00 a.m. on Southeast 80th between Hawthorne and Clay, a couple were in the process of a sex act with the door of the truck they were in open. My husband saw the money change hands. We called the police. It would be the first of many calls. We became aware of the beginning of the great change in our neighborhood. The prostitution business really picked up on 82nd Avenue and was spilling over into our neighborhood. One day during spring school break, we had two granddaughters scheduled to come for lunch. They are 11 and 5. We planned a lunch on our front porch. As they carried our lunch out, the girls followed me, had to reverse, and take them back into the house. Our house sits up above street level. How do you explain to a couple of kids that a guy is having a sex act performed on him at the curb in a car? Later in the spring, the same 11-year-old would play softball at Montevilla Park. These games would be preceded by volunteers sweeping the fields, removing condoms and needles. There was no let-up, the traffic circling off of 82nd onto the side streets. Hearing our area referred to as the red light district was really a sad day. With the fact we were losing sleep due to constant circling, the screech of tires, and being told of the experiences of young women being harassed in the streets, we knew something had to be done. Our neighborhood group, Montevilla in Action, met and decided to petition the council to reinstate the prostitution-free zones. We knew this was the tool that officers could use to help control the problem. We gathered signatures on the weekends at the farmers' markets in Montevilla and in Lynch's, and one volunteer canvassed businesses on 82nd from Stark to Division. In a short two-and-a-half months, the result was 1,500 signatures. As an activist in this neighborhood for 35-plus years, I know how caring my friends and neighbors are. I have called on them many times to back the project I was working on, from housing homeless people in my church, to feeding needy families, to helping me finance the softball team I was coaching. At this time, we are wondering why and how a treatment program will protect us from the invasion again. Good police work is what helped us this year, and we do appreciate that. Heavy patrols were very visible, coverages brought things into control. It was commonly known that we have an ordinance, it is commonly known that if we had an ordinance such as Seattle's SOAP in place for control of this criminal activity, maybe the pimps and prostitutes would migrate, wouldn't migrate here again. How can we justify a treatment program for those who live on a near nomadic life, and will, according to statistics, move on before they ever make it to court and enter a process? How long will the special cars be working the avenue? We have many questions unanswered. We feel an opportunity for a solution is being ignored. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Carla, next.
Item 1609, request of Liz Sullivan to address council regarding Montevilla in action.
Good morning.
State your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Liz Sullivan. I too will try to be brief. It's hard to cram it all into three minutes. Good morning. My family and I live in Mount Tabor. In the late spring of this year, we started noticing more and more cars with prostitutes and Johns parked in our neighborhood and engaging in the crime at all hours of the day and night. We all had to be on constant alert and chase away the numerous cars that we presumed stopped on our residential streets as they were originally heading towards Mount Tabor Park. We also started seeing more and more discarded condoms on the streets where we walked, in our parks, and in our children's schoolyards. When we drove along 82nd Avenue, we were both shocked and saddened to see this marked increase of these young women being freely and blatantly traded now in our streets, in our city. These groups of women were now all up and down the avenue at any time of the day or night. It was difficult to just drive by them. It was as if the whole city was now enabling this crime to now thrive and flourish. We turned a blind eye to their daily suffering. So we got active, and we got educated. What happened? What caused this new critical level of crime in our communities? What was apparent to all was that at the root of this increased escalation in crime was the city's abandonment of the prostitution-free zone on September 30th, 2007. We researched the history and timeline of the PFZ, and you can see in the handout there on page two, there's a consistent timeline where we were shocked at how the PFZ was lumped with the drug-free zone, and that the city's commissioned research for abandoning both ordinances only researched the drug-free zone. In the entire 18-page research report done by the city, the word prostitution was not mentioned once, yet both ordinances were allowed to sunset. This, to us, was the priority reason number one as to why the PFZ should be reinstated based on this now obvious and blatant example of cause and effect exploding right before our eyes in our neighborhoods. These criminals are now testing our neighborhoods and our city to see how much we will tolerate. Look at how proactive they were. They saw the opportunity with the PFZ now being absent, and made our neighborhoods their new business district. We need to be even more proactive and not reactive like the city was in the late summer and the early fall months of this year. With the tightening budgets of 2009, we have to be more strategic about our efforts in truly addressing this crime. In our rebuttal back to the mayor's proposal in early September, we questioned if this budget is slated for the increased missions and the detailed cars, and if we have money for next year, and to what level. We also stressed this idea of community policing and court watch should not be one of the four main pillars. The working-class family of the Montevilla Community Foot Patrol were patrolling this summer seven nights a week due to necessity. They do not want that same urgent need to still be there come the springtime. We do not have that mentality of "not in my backyard." We don't want any other community to be overtaken by this crime. It breaks our hearts, and now our neighborhood women and young girls do not feel safe. They're being approached and harassed by both pimps and Johns. Those same pimps that are making these other young women and girls walk our neighborhood streets. We do not want this tolerated in any neighborhood. We also strongly suggest why the city is not focused on the demand, the Johns. Please see page five of the handout for research done by activist Melissa Farley on why this is key. This should be one of the four pillars to the mayor's proposal. This needs, excuse me, this needs to be a consistent and targeted effort focused on them. This also needs to be communicated by the city that this crime will not be tolerated, and if you are arrested, that numerous steps will be taken against you. Why not activate proven effective tactics that over 280 U.S. cities employ when dealing with Johns that have proven to work? List them on a website, put them in the paper.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Okay. Can I just quickly?
One sentence.
Okay. Make them do work through. There are many inexpensive and effective punishments to this crime. The goal of the zone is not, is the next best thing to rehabilitation of the offender. That is, the rehabilitation of the area and the community.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Item 1610, request of Joanne Konzen to address council regarding tenant landlord property manager rights and responsibilities.
Good morning.
Good morning. Please state your name when you speak. You have three minutes.
Joanne Konzen. I am here with solution today, and I'm hoping to, my intention is basically to plant a few seeds in getting the process started. Of course, proceeding that is the problem. I was a renter for a couple of years in a property managed by Bowen Property Management. They undertook what they called a renovation. They offered no information to the tenants as to what they could anticipate beyond one week of entry into the units. It ended up being Monday through Friday every day for over five months. We had no way to resolve the problems. There was no phone numbers that I contacted on the tenant landlord guidelines that allowed any problem-solving in the issue. I had experienced loss of income. The story goes on. So my solution is, based on experience in other communities in which I lived, is to establish a rent board, a very clear-cut rent board. It would offer mediation services that would relieve the courts of the burdens that they already have in the system. The process of hiring attorneys would not be a huge burden to tenants. Now, this is also information for new landlords, established landlords, to find guidelines and how to proceed with any kind of problems or processes that they want to undertake. The beauty of it requires no taxpayer funds. It's always worked in communities in which I've lived that each tenant would pay a dollar per month. It's $12 a year, and that would be matched by the property management companies, so essentially $24 per tenant, per year. And I think from my experience, that would fund the rent board beautifully. It's always been an experience that it's resolved problems. Now, in the process of the so-called renovation, it would have had the ability to stop the process in its tracks. It would have required that all tenants be, talked to about the process of the renovation, and given the option to stay or move. And it's really unbelievable that they were able to get away with the process that they did.
Konzen, can I just respond?
Sure.
We took up last week the recommendations of a work group, the Quality Rental Housing Work Group, that was a comprehensive framework for enhancing the rights of tenants and for addressing problems as they come up. I don't, I don't think this concept made its way into the package, but as the Housing Commissioner, I'd like to know more about it. So if you could just, before you go, drop off anything you have in our office.
Absolutely.
And we'll get back to you. But we also want you to take a look at that study group's recommendations, and be interested in your thoughts.
Now, my proposal would be statewide, because I did find that small, you know, within a county, it became problematic when people moved outside of the area. And I also wanted to add, if I could, just briefly, given the economic times, it would also be fair to have some kind of a rent management, because typically, when the lease expires, raise rent well beyond 5%, up to 10%, and the tenant has no way of anticipating this kind of renting.
Well, the theme that you've raised about resolving these disputes outside of the courts and getting quicker relief and fairer outcomes is something the council is already on record as supporting, so I'd be interested in knowing more about your idea.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who's the next?
1611, request of Carolyn Fuller to address council regarding two city workers.
Thank you for being here. When you speak, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Carolyn Fuller, and I'm here to explain a horrendous process that's been taking place at my home. In mid-October or early November, the city engineer came out to my front corner and was surveying the area and writing down notes and checking out what's going on. And I said, I ran outside, I said, "Are you the person that's going to help us solve this flooding problem?" And he said, "Well, yes, we are going to be changing the sewer, and I'm just out here finding out what it looks like and what the slopes are in order to be able to make up a plan." And this is on the corner of Kirby in Fremont, and it's the northwest corner. We've had 35 years of flooding there, according to the record of the longest-living person there, person who's lived there the longest. And I've had this experience for 13 years that I've lived there. I've had to go out and unstop the sewer numerous times, because there's a huge flood between my corner and the other corner, and the children are trying to get to school across the street. November 14th, I signed a contract to have a wall built, a retaining wall built, because my corner was the source of a great deal of erosion and a great deal of soil being dumped into the sewer. And on November 15th, I amended our contract to add, and it was for a wall that was to be about three feet high. And at the time that we, November 17th, we finalized it at a height of three feet. And we caught, in the meantime, I called the sidewalk department and the sewer engineer and set a meeting, and wanted to set a meeting between the two of them. I called their offices, and I wanted to set a meeting between the engineer and the sewer person, because I realized that putting my wall in might have an impact on what was going on, and I knew that the sidewalk needed to be changed in order to avoid the flooding. So I asked to meet with both of them. The only person that appeared was the sidewalk man. And after protracted very, very unpleasant encounter with him, in which I was treated as if I was about 15 years old and with an IQ of about 50, he refused to acknowledge the fact that his sidewalk was concave, and that there was puddle formed here and a puddle formed there, and it would spill over, taking all the soil. So he would not take any action. This, "I don't care the hell with this project. I don't give a damn." He just said, "No, I don't care the hell about this project," or, "I don't give a damn what you're doing here, but this damn sidewalk is never being changed. It meets federal code." And he would not comply with this. 20 minutes later, someone from the construction inspector's office came and issued a permit, a violation of code. The contractor went to speak to the code person. He says, "Ah, no, just move the wall back. It's not a big deal."
Ma'am, your time is up.
And then I've gotten no recourse.
Did you have a copy of your information and give the council clerk?
Do I have a?
Do you have a copy of what you've just said, so that we could look at it?
Yes.
Good.
It's going to be hard to read.
Well, if you gave the council clerk your contact information, we could have the bureau's contact.
I'd also like to add that my experience in Commissioner Sam Adams' office, and I think it's interesting that he has left the room, but in my treatment in that office, the people were condescending and obsequious. Sam Adams himself spoke to me in an incredibly obsequious, condescending tone of voice, and spoke to me also, as the city inspector had spoke to me, like I was someone who was 10 or 15 years old, maybe six years old.
Your time is up.
And was a bore.
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you. Who's called the next?
Item 1612, request of Sharon Nassett to address council regarding food banks.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Sharon Nassett, and happy Thanksgiving. It'll be here very, very soon, and four days off, I mean, Bankers' Holiday is what that used to be called. I actually am here to speak about two things, and one is a written piece of paper, and I will just leave it with you, and it has to do with foreclosures and mortgages, and what we can do as a state and organizations that we already currently have that can step in place, taking care of foreclosures in our area and take care of handling, keeping our properties more local and out of secondary market. But the food banks and pantries are stuck in the same type of cycle that the people that come to use the food banks are stuck in. They never have enough. They're always They never have enough, they're always trying to catch, they're always trying to run up, and they're always looking for and in a negative situation. And our food banks and our pantries, as you know, in Oregon, we have some of the nation's highest as far as children and adults, although we're in the breadbasket of the world. A lot of it is taking a look at reorganizing it. Not only what we as citizens can do, and there's many things to bring things to the pantry, but if the city council took a look at the pantries and the soup kitchens and decided exactly how much it need, would take, excuse me, to meet their needs for an entire year, how many pounds of food is it that we don't have to cut back on the boxes? So we know what we are looking at. By setting up an actual goal, we can ask different people to donate money as well as actually set up things where we're saying, "We're closer and closer now to meeting the goal of actually having not only enough food on the shelf for this year, but have two years ample ahead." Right now, we kind of leave it to the federal government and to the do-gooders. But the bottom line is that the people that are hungry, the children that are hungry, are our citizens. They are the same people that are next to us. The phrase that the poor will always be with us was not meant to make us feel helpless. It was to inspire us to do something that was permanent. There are several things we can do besides just feeding, but at the very least, that is what we need to do. And you have good leadership here and very good hearts. If we know exactly the dollar amount to take care of feeding and funding all the soup kitchens and pantries, we would have a mark to aim towards. Perhaps we could have continual marathons until we reach those lines and then get us ahead. How wonderful it would be when you see people on a corner with a sign that says, "I'm hungry." If you could hand him a card that says, "Here are local soup kitchens and foods," and when you go there, they're not going to say, "We're out of food, slide down the wall and wait. We open back up in two hours," like they do now, or cut back, as St. Vincent's has had to do. We usually, in North Portland, have a pantry that gives out a couple hundred a month. They've had to cut back to 88 boxes because they don't have enough, and they turn people away every week. So if you could also take a look at the foreclosure information I have on how Oregon can step forward and actually take our properties into our own hands, it's always best to climb out of the hole before you reach bottom. Thank you, and have a lovely holiday.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do to feed our hungry. The latest stat that I saw is that there's 117,000 children in the state of Oregon that go to bed hungry at night, and I think that should be unacceptable to our state.
I couldn't agree more, and what I really believe is, if we actually had a dollar amount of what it would take to feed our, do our soup kitchens and our pantries, and then did a step up. And I would also like to remind people, besides bringing in food, money is actually a better thing to bring in because you've bought that can of food secondary, paid for all of the costs. When you give them dollar amounts, they buy food by the pound, and it's much, and it goes much further. So a few fundraisers in that direction with your leadership would be wonderful.
And you'll be pleased to know that in a team effort, the council is working on individual pieces of a response to the recession, and we'll be coming out with that in January, so.
Good.
Thanks for your, as always, head of the game.
Oh, well, thanks. Your leadership's wonderful. Have a good holiday.
Thank you. Is that the last communication?
That's the last, yes.
Okay. Now, move to the consent agenda. Do any commissioners wish to pull any items from the consent agenda? Does any member of this audience wish to pull any particular item from the consent agenda? Please call the vote.
Adams?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Please read the 9/30 Times, certain.
Item 1613, mayor's delegation to Mutari, Zimbabwe sister city.
We've had a sister city relationship with Mutari, Zimbabwe since 1991. Cliff Walker was one of the founders of it, but it provides a valuable service to the people of Mutari. They've helped build a clinic, they support a school and an orphanage, and they give supplies to community organizations. This is the first year, however, that the city of Portland has sent an official delegation from Portland, and it was led by Maria Cosmatidis, president of the Portland Mutari Sister City Association and founder of Africa AIDS Response, Dana Kirk, a longtime volunteer with the Sister City Association, Cliff Walker, founder of the Sister City Relationship, Myla Grayson, former international relations director for Portland, and Austin Raglione, my chief of staff who was representing me there. With that, I'd like to invite Maria up.
Thank you so much for having us here today. My name is Maria Cosmatidis. I'm the president of the Portland Mutari Sister City Association, and I'm a nurse practitioner. I work in the HIV clinic at Multnomah County and have been there for the past 13 years since I moved to Portland. I really want to thank you on behalf of all of our volunteers. We are an entire volunteer organization in the sister city, and especially for all of our delegates that are here today for honoring us and allowing us to be here. We're very excited to be able to present briefly a little bit about our trip and about what we do. Our hope today is to give you a little bit of history, a little bit of background about the association, what we strive to do as a sister city in building relationships across these large borders that we have, and show you some images and stories from our trip. We hope to do this in somewhat of a tag-team approach so that you don't get bored with just listening to me talk for a few minutes, and we hope that each one of us will be sharing something that's been dear to us, either through the relationship or through this delegation. My portion, now as one of the elders, as I say of the associations, especially after this trip, along with Cliff, will be to talk a little bit about the history and the development of the association very briefly, as well as what we do with the development of Africa AIDS Response, which is a program of the Portland Mutari Sister City Association, to talk a little bit about the current efforts that we have. But before we do that, what we wanted to show you was a very brief, three-minute video that we made in 2006 to show at our World AIDS Day benefit that we have annually on World AIDS Day, which is upcoming. And it was designed to really outline and highlight the dedication of the clinic that was built and dedicated in 2005. These, hopefully, the music and the images from this video will frame the rest of our So to briefly tell you a little bit about the programs that we do, we thank you for watching the video. It's one of our favorite things, was put together by one of our volunteer members. And as Cliff said, the sister city was founded in 1991, and in 2000, the program Africa AIDS Response was founded basically by a group of Portlanders who really wanted to address the international pandemic of HIV and to support grassroots AIDS efforts there. Again, another fortuitous connection was I met Mike Lindberg, who happened to tell me that we had a sister city in Zimbabwe prior to my wanting to go for a couple of months for the first time to spend some time in Africa. With that connection, I called up Cliff. A group of us, all volunteers, people with HIV, community activists, put together our first benefit in the year 2000 called Hope is Vital. I'm sorry, that one was just actually called Africa AIDS Response. We went on our first trip after having a sellout at the Crystal Ballroom of 1,000 people and raising $20,000. I went to Zimbabwe in hopes of being able to work in a clinic that was there in the small community of St. Werber's, where Veronica worked, Veronica Nioni, who you saw in those pictures that Cliff made that connection with back in 1991. Unfortunately, there wasn't a clinic there. It had had many troubles over the past 25 years with the citizens there trying to build a clinic. So I didn't actually do that, but was able to leave the seed money to get that started. Since that time, we have raised and delivered over $120,000 to the community and also have had at least five delegations visit during that time. It is primarily in rural Zimbabwe where we make this connection, and again, every time we go, we say, "We're here representing the people of Portland." They always very much feel it's the whole city and the whole community that represents them, or represents us, even though it might be only one or two, or in this case, 19 people who actually visit Zimbabwe. We have three main primary focuses. Those are the primary healthcare, primary healthcare, of which you saw the clinic, orphan support, and support for people living with HIV. For the past eight years, the clinic was the major thing that was developed over that time. We provide supplies, we provide different medications when we come. We're able to, this past year, actually purchase an ambulance, which is essentially a pickup truck with a shell, but the ambulance has been able to provide transport for people living in very rural areas to the clinic, and then from the clinic into the city hospital when they need to get there. A waiting mother's shelter was built over the last year, which provides shelter for women who are pregnant, who walk to the clinic to deliver and wait outside and historically under a tree for the last month or so before they deliver their child, so they can deliver in the clinic because they're so excited that it's there. So we were able to fund that over the past year, as well as started support of a small project to prevent mother-to-child transmission of HIV this past year. In terms of orphan support, this has been one of our hallmarks in terms of the most important things for us over the past years. They've actually doubled in terms of the numbers that you saw on that video in the last two years. We provide school fees, we provide food, books, supplies, uniforms, and most importantly, I think, that food, primarily because some of these kids only get one meal a day, and they actually get it when they go to school. The third area is the support for people living with HIV. Oh, darn. And that's in the terms of the main supports of FASSO, which is the Family AIDS Support Organization. This is primarily an organization of women with HIV, though there are a few men who also have HIV. They make these beautiful panels, which support themselves. This is to support a microeconomic project. We sell, we buy them directly from the men and women there who make them, who have HIV. When we provide them with the money on the days that they are there, they actually have the money in their hands to buy food. They actually have the money to pay for their children's school fees. This one says, "It takes a planet to save a village," which has been one of our taglines since we started in 2000. And the second tagline that we always use is "Hope is vital." That came from one of the first women I talked to at FASSO in 2000 when I asked them what they wanted to say to people with HIV in Portland, and they said, "Hope is vital." And so that has been one of our main messages that we have tried to provide. Our local Portland efforts have been pen pals that have gone back and forth from the students here in Oregon and particularly in Portland to Zimbabwe. We do presentations and outreach to schools and community groups, anybody who wants to hear what we have to say, because as you can see, we could talk about it for hours. Last year, we also sent a shipment in conjunction with OHSU of supplies and medications and computers, both to the city and to the rural areas. And lastly, what I hope to call your attention to is the beautiful mural that's on the corner of northeast Broadway and Grand. If you haven't seen it, you need to drive by. It's on the corner of the Rhythm Traders Drumming Store, and it says very largely, "It takes a planet to save a village, hope is vital," and has pictures, value that you'll recognize, of kids and people dancing around and outside of the clinic. So briefly, that's what we intend to do and hope to continue to do, and thank you for your support in that. I want to now introduce the delegates who went on the trip. So if you could all stand. Each of these came, each of these people came with really unique qualities and contributed so much to this trip, I can't tell you. I think I have to sit here and kind of turn so that I can stay with the microphone, so you guys will have to wave since I can't see you on the side. So our leadership was with Dana Kirk Morrison here, who actually wrangled us all and got us there, a long-term volunteer with us, Clifford Walker, the founder, Carmen Hansen, who became the mayoress on our trip. That was her name, quickly given to her by Veronica, the mayoress. Myla Grayson, is Myla here? I didn't see her. Oh, Myla's not here, and Austin Raglione, the chief of staff. These were our fearless leaders. There were two of us that represented the medical care, and that was myself as a nurse practitioner and Dr. Mary O'Hern, who works at OHSU, who isn't here today because she is working in clinic at OHSU. Our HIV educators were Jerry Johnson and John Modder, and John, who is a person living with HIV, was our representation of bringing someone in solidarity to meet them in Mutari. Our resident musician was Benny Morrison, and as you can see, music and dance is such an important part of the community in Zimbabwe, and Benny connected in every way you can imagine in terms of music, and he actually recorded several songs while we were there and has come back and made a CD of the music of Zimbabwe. and has come back and made a CD of the music of Zimbabwe, especially the people that we have met. Our photographer, is John here? John's not here. Oh, that's right, they're on vacation. They went to Thanksgiving. John Greason, who is Myla's husband, was our resident photographer and videographer so that he took eleven hundred photos, I think, on our trip. We had two wonderful teachers with us. It was the first time we were able to bring teachers. Tricia Todd and Lisa O'Brien. No, teaching, you know, teaching. These people have to do their jobs. So this was really a landmark for us to bring teachers. And then most importantly, and for me, what made the trip was bringing the students. And so I'm going to name their names and they're going to shout out. It was Isabel Riddick, Claire McClellan, Andre Walker, Gabrielle Raglione, Maddie Hanlon Austin, and Trey Ford. And they're all going to talk to you a little bit from now on. So with that, what I'd like to do is introduce Dana, who's going to tell you a little bit about our trip. She, again, was the coordinator of our trip and has in the past been our volunteer executive director and very dedicated to what we do.
Thank you. So my name is Dana Kirk Morrison. And I was going to, I'm going to set the tone for all the kids that are coming up and speaking, but I wanted to talk about what's going on in Zimbabwe right now. Not only is nineteen people a very difficult number for us to manage when we're used to four or five, but Zimbabwe has a lot of challenges that are going on that even we couldn't foresee. So one of it is the bank system. Right now, the day we arrived on a Monday, it was 25,000 Zimbabwe dollars to one US dollar. And that was after they had taken ten zeros off the currency in the beginning of September. The day we left, it was 65,000 Zimbabwe dollars to one US dollar. And that was on a Friday. So within one week, it had almost tripled. What it is today, I can't even begin to guess as far as what the money is worth. At the same time, the government put a lock on all funds you can withdraw from a bank. And you can only withdraw 50,000 Zim dollars a day. So you can only withdraw less than a dollar a day for your family for food. And all those who are employed, which is only about 20% of the population, all of their money goes into the banking system. They don't get paid out in cash. It's a way of the government controlling the funds. An average salary is, for a teacher, is 91,000 Zimbabwe dollars per month, which is why all of the teachers and medical professionals and everyone has been on strike for about the last month or so because they're not getting paid enough to feed their families. And even if they had money in the banks, they're not getting enough money out. At the same time, the cost of produce has skyrocketed because no one knows how much it's going to cost from one day to the next. In grocery stores, you buy things in US dollars and in Zimbabwe dollars. A bottle of water costs four US dollars. It was just a ridiculous pricing scheme because no one knows how to make sense of anything. This is not a very good photo because we're not supposed to take pictures of this. But somebody did. But I wanted to show it to you because it's the lines outside the banks. There's about hundreds of people outside of every single bank in the city waiting for money for their families. So everywhere we drove, this is what we saw, was just lines of people waiting to only take out 50,000 Zimbabwe dollars a day for food. Want to go to the next? A lot of people are taking their money and they're walking to Mozambique, which is only about three miles from the city of Mutari, to buy goods in Mozambique. And then they sneak across the borders at night and walk at night. And so this is in the morning, watching them carrying food. I believe the next photo. And other materials such as a chainsaw. This woman has a chainsaw on her head that she is carrying back from Mozambique for supplies to bring to her family because they're not available anymore in the country. So just another picture of the women with the supplies that they're carrying because even those stores, the only stores that have produce for you to buy are owned and operated by South Africa. So there's the Spar Market, which is where I did all of our shopping for the trip to get snacks and food for us. But most stores have empty grocery store shelves and have closed. And so most people can't afford to go to the Spar Market. So there's, if you want to actually go back one, sorry. There is the challenges of this bank lines and lack of the ability to get water. Transportation and fuel was also a big challenge. We were helped out by Mercy Corps, who is headquartered in Portland but has a lot of operations in Mutari. And they're a friendly organization that we work side by side with. They were able to help us get fuel coupons. That's the other challenge is even if you had a car, the average person can't buy fuel because you have to get fuel coupons from the government to be able to get fuel. And it's these little coupons that you buy and it's a dollar twenty-five per liter. And so you pre-buy it. But we still had to drive to four different petrol stations to find one that was willing to accept our fuel coupons from the government. It's just this constant challenge and constant difficulties of what's going on in that country. And I don't know if you've been paying attention to the media, but Jimmy Carter and Nelson Mandela have been trying to go in on a humanitarian mission and have not been able to right now. And it's because of the Sister City relationship and the city of Mutari that we were able to do this trip at this time and get the needed goods to the people. With that being said, it's a challenging place, but it is a place of the strongest, most wonderful, and most lively people. When we first arrived, this is after flying 35 hours, driving for eight hours. We show up, the sun is setting, to the Family AIDS Support Organization, which is a group of HIV-positive men and women. It's a membership organization. They're the ones that make the panel. And as they drove in, and I was actually in a separate car, the bus was surrounded by hundreds of people who had been waiting six hours for us because we were on Zimbabwe time and arrived six hours late. But they had been waiting for six hours just to see us. And it's that human-to-human connection that makes it so powerful. We brought 1,800 pounds of donations with us. Each person had two 50-pound bags each. Hundred pounds of donations that were brought. And yet it was the people that made the biggest impact. Us being there brought hope. It brought this human-to-human connection that is so difficult to express in words. This is just some of the luggage and things that we brought. You'll notice there's three bike boxes. Portland's a city of bikes, so of course we took bikes with us to Zimbabwe. What they use them for is the catchment area of St. Werbergs is about 15,000 people. And there's a chief and there's six subchiefs. And they station the bicycles at each of the subchiefs' houses around the community so that if there's an emergency, someone can hop on a bicycle, ride to the clinic to get the ambulance so the ambulance can go pick somebody up. They also are going to use some of the bicycles for teachers to go to the remote areas to run impromptu classrooms. So the bikes are this big deal, so we brought them. They were received with much excitement. The day after we had left them off, the kids had lined up to ride the bikes and they started a bike club so all the kids could learn to ride a bicycle in the middle of rural Zimbabwe. And so with this joy, there's also this balance of sorrow that characterized much of our trip. Veronica Nioni, who's the headmistress of the church, I mean, of the school, pulled me aside and she said, "Do you mind if I keep the boxes?" And so I'm thinking, gosh, am I really bad American? Because I would have just thrown the boxes away. I wouldn't have thought about the boxes. And so she said, you know, I really would like to keep the boxes. And I said, sure, of course you can have the boxes. And she said, "Well, we need the boxes so that we can create coffins for the orphans. Too many kids are dying and don't have families to give them a proper burial. Would you mind if we use them?" We've made up a cemetery next to the playground on the primary school. But the teachers are bearing the orphans in and they're using the boxes that we brought that we had thought of as trash or something to be recycled, as something that was so central to give the dead the respect that they deserve. So there was this balance back and forth that was going on that made it a very challenging trip, I think, for all of the delegates. Because at one moment, you're singing and dancing. At the next moment, you're hearing these stories that are unfathomable from kind of our Western perspective. And so with that, I want to introduce the kids to kind of share some of those stories and tell you in their words what kind of struck them and what were the pieces of the trip that they brought home with them. I know that they've been speaking at their schools and sharing the stories, but they wanted to have that opportunity here. So Maddie's going to be the first one to talk.
Hi, I'm Maddie Hanlon Austin. And I'd just like to thank you guys for this opportunity, this life-changing experience that I've had for letting me be able to go on that. And all of us, I know that I'm speaking for all of us. But so the first day that we were there, the second day, actually, we went to St. Augustine's Orphanage. And it was really the first day that we got to interact and meet with any of the kids in Zimbabwe. And while it was heartbreaking and tragic at the same time, it was also enlightening and life-changing. Some of the kids there, there are 28 kids living in the orphanage. And then they're fortunate enough to have a roof over their heads and beds to sleep in. They are also facing some of the greatest struggles that all the people in Zimbabwe are facing, which is lack of food. Their storage room, which I don't think we have a picture of, but they have six potatoes left to feed 28 kids and about this much salt and cooking oil to cook with. And it's just, despite how, that the fact that they haven't eaten in days, they still were just gracious and courteous and they were smiling and they were so happy and they were radiating this joy that I'd never seen before. And it was, it was really eye-opening. And here we are, we're giving them stuffed animals. We brought stuffed animals, was the only thing that we had for them at the St. Augustine's Orphanage. And as we pass them out among these kids ranging in age from five to 22 years old, they clung to these stuffed animals. And no matter what size they were, even big or small, they weren't complaining. They were just radiating happiness. And that's a picture, I think, next picture. It's hard to see. Caroline was one of the girls that I really connected with, this small five-year-old girl who is now showing signs of HIV and AIDS. And there is no medication for children. They can't afford to give these kids medication. And so they don't think that she'll live to be over eight years old. And it's just tragic to think that I had this connection with this little girl, this brilliant child, who even though she didn't speak English, I felt like I could just relate to her completely. That if I was to ever go back to Zimbabwe, she might not be there. And we gave her a blanket from the Women of Wisdom, which is an HIV organization here in Portland. And they gave her that quilt just to share with one of the children there, over there, that had HIV as well. And so it was kind of establishing that connection, which is what we wanted, which was one of the goals of our trip. So, yeah. Thank you.
So I'm Gabby Raglione. And thank you for having us here today, too. So when we first, this is us first arriving to St. Werbergs, where Veronica Nioni, she's the, she's the headmistress of the primary school. And when we arrived, the kids were all running alongside the bus. And it just made that, our arrival, that much extra special for us because it's just that authenticity that everybody in Zimbabwe has. And we were greeted by music everywhere. But to me, this was probably my favorite just because Catherine, that woman in the middle, she's the music director at St. Werbergs. She was, she was really, really one of the, one of probably my favorite people to meet. And it was really just great to see a big group of kids singing to us. And I had that connection. And they also danced for us, which was really great. Let's see. We also, we brought a lot of donations with us, obviously. And to St. Werbergs, we brought, we brought sports supplies. We brought soccer balls and jerseys and stuff. And the kids have on Lincoln shorts and, and Grant, Grant jerseys. So if you know anything about high school sports, big rivalry there. It's funny that trips to Zimbabwe had to bridge that rivalry gap. But got it done. So these are, we actually, all the students got to play soccer with the kids and the kids are barefoot. They don't really have any shoes. But they're really, they're really great soccer players. It's unbelievable how well they play. And it's just, I mean, I wish I could play like them, but... Uh, let's see. Oh, so in this picture, Corinne is with the cutouts of Maddie and Mackenzie, the, her grandkids. And in the picture, you can kind of see some kids holding food containers because that day, food came from the federal government to St. Werbergs. And, and there had been no food at the school for a month. So, but mostly it was because of our, our presence that the government brought food because they wanted to, in a way, just sort of mask Zimbabwe's current situation and have us not see that true disparity that they have there. So it was just by our presence that those kids got food. So that was just another, another privilege to, to see.
Okay, so I'm Claire McClellan and I'm in seventh grade. And I'm going to talk about the chief. Well, the chief is the man with the blue hat and the beard. And the man standing next to him is Isaiah. And the woman who's about to hug Maria is Sina. They're the two that are sort of like next in charge after Veronica of St. Werbergs. And the chief's name is Chigadore Zamunia. He, he is the chief of the Zamunia tribal land. And it's, St. Werbergs is on that land. And that's why he's here in the picture. Okay, so this is Austin and Veronica with the chief with the plate that they gave him, has the dove and the St. Werbergs mission on it. Izzy and I got to talk with the chief a bit and he was really excited to talk with us. He thought it was pretty cool. He was really nice and he was excited. And he wants us to send him this picture so he can see us with him. And since I was the, a girl and the youngest member of the delegation, I got to present him with his gifts. It's a hat, a plate, and a tie. And he loves hats and it's also a status symbol. And the plate Austin made. And the tie had roses on it for the city of roses. And, oh, keep going back. Thank you. So when I presented it to him, I had to kneel and bow my head because it's a symbol of respect and... Yeah, respect. So this is the mural on Rhythm Traders. It's "The Hope is Vital and It Takes a Planet to Save a Village". On the far right, there is the chief. And then on the left... Well, actually, in the very middle, standing in front of the clinic, behind everyone singing and dancing, that is Veronica and a child.
So I'm going to start while they're coming up. So the St. Werbergs Clinic, Maria already kind of gave a good background to it, so I'm just going to go through the pictures quickly. But one of the points of it, you can just keep going through them. One of the points of the photos, when we get to it, was Andre, Clifford Walker's son, was able to join us. And so it was great to have a different generation there to see this. And so the chief was very tickled. And he's a very kind of spunky man. And this is a picture of Andre and Chief Chigadore Zamunia dancing. And the chief pulled him out and said, "Andre, we have to dance together because you're going to carry on the tradition of your grandfather." And so it was a very powerful moment. And Andre couldn't be here today. So I just wanted to share kind of his piece and one of his big memories with you.
Good morning, Mayor Potter and Commissioners. I'm John Mauder. I've been living positively with HIV for at least 11 years. And having spent half of the last 24 months volunteering in rural Western Kenya, I thought I would be prepared for what I would see in Zimbabwe. And I could not have been farther from being prepared than anyone could imagine. I was continually astounded by the lack of resources in a country that has an estimated 30% HIV infection rate. But I was even more amazed by the amount of blind faith that is held by people who, in my opinion, have no concrete reasons to have hope. And I think this goes back to what Maria said in terms of hope just being vital to, to living. FASSO is meant to provide testing for HIV, HIV medication, counseling services, nutritional therapy, and courses, as well as income-generating projects such as the embroidery. In reality, they're no longer able to provide many of these services. Um, in reality, they're no longer able to provide many of these, um, services because of lack of funding. But what they lack in services, they definitely make up for in the amount of love and support that goes on between all the members of the organization. Um, as part of our day at Faso, we had the opportunity to move from group to group and ask them what they wanted the people of Portland to know about their life. And it was painful to hear, um, the responses. Although the government supposedly provides, um, free HIV medication, in order to get that medication, a patient has to go to the Mutari Infectious Disease Hospital every three months and pay for their own lab work. And because of the financial problems that Dana's pointed out, it makes it impossible. And so in reality, people just are not on any HIV medication that could prolong their life. The other thing that was surprising was that, um, tuberculosis, when I asked people about how many of them had tuberculosis, um, every single group, roughly seventy to eighty percent of the people, said they either currently have tuberculosis or have had it at one time. Um, many of the people have been on it more than, have had it more than once. Um, they're unable to complete the treatment regimen, or they just become reinfected because of the, um, closeness they live and with other people. Tuberculosis is a disease of poverty. Um, people that are living, you know, five to six people in a very small room, um, tend to pass tuberculosis on fairly easily. Uh, co-infection with HIV and TB severely affects the life expectancy in Zimbabwe. It's currently at about forty-two years, which is roughly half of what we are able to enjoy here in the United States. Um, a woman took great pride in showing us the garden. And as you can see in the picture, um, the space is really quite large, but there's very few plants. Um, it's phenomenal that what they do plant are herbs and greens that, um, boost the immune system or reduce side effects of HIV, such as nausea. The problem is that there's no longer seeds available, and there's a water shortage. So they're unable to really grow as much as they need. But, you know, in looking at the garden, it's also important to bring up the amount of food people have available to eat. And in speaking with them, they roughly have about a fistful size of rice a day and half a fistful of beans, if they're lucky. And many times, the mothers are giving their portion of food to their children so that their children have enough food to eat. And these are mothers that are suffering from wasting due to HIV and AIDS, and yet they're still giving up their food, um, to provide for their children. Um, I know that sharing my story inspired and empowered the people at Faso, the people at Saint Werbergs, but I have to say that I really did get the better end of the stick. Um, you know, the, the entire time was really emotionally difficult for me. Um, as a person being fortunate and enough to live in the country where I can get, um, proper care and proper medication, to hear the stories of these people, and yet see the amount of hope that they maintain, was incredibly empowering to me and expanded my horizons in being even more grateful for, for what I, what I have and the support my family has, so... Um, you know, as you can tell, it's emotional for even to, to share the experience, but it was absolutely wonderful to be there.
What's up? I'm Trey Ford, um, I'm a junior in Grant High School. Um, really, going here, I thought, you know, I was gonna go and change people's lives, which, I mean, I did, but I think they changed our lives more than we changed theirs. Um, especially being at Faso was definitely where I had the most life-changing experience. Um, dancing with the, dancing with the kids is actually unbelievable, um, just... I've, I've done African dance for quite some time, and it's been one of my passions. And just watching these kids and like the talent they had in dancing, and just the smiles they had doing it. Um, but I think that's one of the biggest things, is like the people's smiles, were just like the most radiant smiles as you've ever seen, just glowing, just straight from the heart. They weren't no fake smiles on anyone's faces. Um, this girl was a part of a group called Itchy Paw, which in Shona means bright light. Um, this was a theater group made of about seven kids all under the age of fifteen, um, who put on a performance for us. And it was just the talent and the soul that these kids had performing just to do it, not for the spotlight or for the fame of, you know, showing people what they can do, but just to have something to do, to contain their time. And being a theater kid at Grant High School, I think that changed me the most, just... But I've never seen such a passionate performance as I saw when I was there. And that was just one of the most unbelievable things to see. There was this kid named Winston, who was the leader of the group. Um, and his talent with no, like no teaching experience, which is unbelievable, um... They had this book that they kept all their records in themselves, they managed themselves. Um, they had everyone's names, everyone's birthdays, everyone's information about who they were. And after their performance, they did, uh, spoken word poetry. And this girl right here, at age of ten, um, had the most beautiful poem, and just so much soul and so much heart in her words that she was saying. There was so much meaning in everything that had been said. And I think that was one of the biggest things about being in Zimbabwe is everything was just... That everyone had so much hope and had so much faith, and everything meant so much to them.
Thank you. Finally, I need to come back and, and address kind of a large elephant that I brought into the room, um, a huge elephant. Uh, near the end of the trip, I went into multiple epileptic seizures, um, that continued throughout several days. In fact, I had about thirty seizures over the course of, um, a few days. And this medical emergency really highlighted the lack of medical care in the country. Um, I was unaware of what was going on because of the seizures, but it created, um, an extreme amount of stress for everyone, both in the delegation, but also everybody on the ground in Mutari as they tried to deal with it. Um, gasoline had be syphoned from one car into the ambulance, so they could even transport me to the Mutari Infectious Disease Hospital, where I was the only patient. Um, I was the only patient mainly because there are no doctors, there are, there is no medicine, so there's no point in really going to the hospital. Um, I was initially put into the ICU room, which you can see in the picture. Um, this is what passes for ICU. It's a room with a burned-out light bulb, an empty oxygen tank, and no doctors. Uh, eventually, as the day wore on and it was getting dark, they had to move me into another room so that they could have some light. Um, the one thing that was available from the nurses was tea for the two doctors from our delegation and prayers for me. Um, there simply was nothing else. They, the mayor's office of Mutari spent, um, hours calling around the country trying to find Dilantin, which is the normal treatment that they would have used on me. Um, and it was simply unavailable. They ended up getting, um, IV Valium and Penobarbital from some of the local pharmacies, and that helped to get me somewhat under control. After one night, the mayor had to arrange to have me transported over into Zimbabwe, or over into Mozambique, so that I could be airlifted to Johannesburg. The reason they couldn't pick me up in Zimbabwe is that two medical evacuation planes that had landed previously had been, um, kept by the Zimbabwe governor, government, and not allowed to take off again. So with a two-hundred-and-thirty-dollar bribe, um, they were able to get me across the border into Mozambique, where I was flown to Johannesburg and spent three days, um, in a hospital there before being flown back to OHSU. Um, you know, it all seems so surreal and so, um, foreign to what we experience here in the United States. But, you know, truly without the help of Maria and Mary O'Hern, things could have really been very tragic by American standards. But I think it's important to note that this is normal, everyday life for people in Zimbabwe, um, where they're trying to deal with, with these issues. And the outcome would not have been as good had I been a Zimbabwean, so thank you.
My name is Isabel Riddick, and I am a seventh grader at Oregon Episcopal School. The children I met at Faso had one or both parents infected by HIV. Many of them had lost a parent or had to help care for a sick parent. The children were physically and mentally very small. For instance, Christine, whose letter I will read, was seventeen years old, but was only my height. Christine Chikova sent a letter entitled "Story of My Life." She is in Form Three, which is a freshman in high school. In her letter, she mentions TB, which stands for tuberculosis. "Story of My Life. I am a girl aged seventeen years. I come from a family of four children and a mom. There are Blessing twenty-seven, Redemer twenty-four, Tzitsi twenty-one, and myself, Christine. My mother is forty-seven years. My father passed away in nineteen ninety-seven on the twenty-seventh of October. His name was Dominic Chikova. When father died, everything came to an end. My mother had to take care of us, and she became a breadwinner. She crossed borders, especially by Mozambique. Then, by then she was still strong, who parents who stay in Buhara wanted her to leave us at Kuvana, wanted her to leave us at Kutana Village, where my dad grew up. They declared that if she did not comply, they would not support her. Mom ignored them and took care of us, and her relatives turned her down. Mother got tested in two thousand and four, and she was positive. She did not hide anything from us. We accepted her as the, the way she was. Blessing got a job, and mom took a rest for a while. We were renting a house at Dongamura, and mother's health started deteriorating. She got TB for the first time, but again, she got it for the second time. This time, Tzitsi also got it, and they were both TB-positive. The owner of the house threw us out because she wanted to protect her children, since TB is contagious. We slept outside for a few weeks. Then God answered our prayers. Blessing was given accommodation at his workplace, and that is where we are staying. Currently, I am doing Form Three. I want to thank all of you who, for the support that you have given, given us. May God continue to bless you always, and may you find happiness wherever you go. And please do not do this only for us, but to everyone that needs your assistance. Greet everyone who did not manage to visit us."
My name is Austin Raglione, and I'm the mayor's chief of staff. And, um, I had the honor of, um, representing the mayor, who was not able to go at the last minute. And, um, I got to be the deputy mayor, which I enjoyed immensely. Actually, I like deputy mayor ass the best, but, um, it didn't stick when I came back. Um, I am actually gonna be brief, because I know we're running, running late. Um, but I did wanna, um, talk briefly about the city of Mutari as a government. Uh, this is the Mutari City Hall, um, this is the delegation in front of the, the, um, city hall. We had, uh, sent them computers last year. The city of Portland sent twenty-two desktop and printers that were surplus for us. And this is the Department of Health, and they're all being used, and, uh, people were very grateful for them. Uh, this is a picture of Simon. He was our host for the city of Mutari. He actually helped us get permission to travel in the country, um, which was pretty significant, given the fact that Jimmy Carter can't get in. He obviously should have met Simon. Um, so, uh, while we were there, we had a signing ceremony. Um, the man behind me is the city clerk, uh, the town clerk, like the city manager. The man who is signing with me is actually the mayor of, of Mutari. And I have to say that he was one of three white people I saw the entire time I was on the trip in Zimbabwe. Um, just quickly, the, um, uh, city of Mutari has a nineteen-member city council. They were all recently elected in March. They are all members of the MDC Party, which is the opposition party. Um, and so, uh, and they are all black, except for Brian James, who was the mayor. And he was, um, he's a former Rhodesian farmer. He had been beat up, he had his farm taken away from him. He was doused with, like, diesel, oil, in an attempt to kill him. He did not die. Um, and he was overwhelmingly elected as mayor by his peers on the city council. He is sort of, you know, their own version of a rock star. He's a rising political star in the opposition party. Um, that is, um, us presenting the Portland flag to them. And I'll have to say, uh, that we've talked a lot about the perseverance of the people that we met, who are hungry and have HIV and, um, are unemployed. But from the city perspective, for, for you to be mayor and council members and to be in a situation where you cannot provide basic services to your constituents is, was really rather overwhelming. Um, the mayor expressed to me his embarrassment that there were piles of garbage. They were neat piles of garbage, but they were piles of garbage nonetheless, all over the city, because they could not get fuel to put in their garbage trucks to pick up the garbage. Like, uh, John said, they run the ambulance system, but they don't have any fuel to put in the ambulance. They have three fire trucks, none of which work, and they don't have gas to run them anyway. Um, so these are the situ, this is the, the world in which they live. Um, and they have no money, because it's all tied up in the power-sharing impasse that's happening at the, at the federal level. So what the, what the mayor of Mutari said that he needed more than anything from the city of Portland was two things. One was their support. The fact that we went there and supported them and acknowledged them was huge to them as a new government trying to, you know, stabilize their community. Um, and secondly, he said what they needed was expertise. Um, they would like to send an allegation to here, to here, to Portland. Um, sometime in the near future, with the mayor and a couple of elected officials and some administrators, to learn how we, as the city of Portland, run our government, so that they can learn efficiencies from us, um, so that they can go back and run an efficient, effective, um, service-oriented government. Um, I have talked to Mayor-elect, um, Adams' office about the possibility of me as a volunteer, since I won't be in the mayor's office anymore, um, being able to work with the Sister City Association, hopefully bringing them back here sometime in two thousand and nine, and working with some of our star pure directors and personnel, um, to help show them some things. Um, the next slide is simply, uh, a photograph. Um, this is Cliff Walker and Veronica, who formed the Sister City relationship in nineteen ninety-one. And the man on the right is a former mayor, Ms. Becky, uh, who was attended a reception that was held in our honor. Um, and then the last slide, I just wanted to show you, this is what it was like riding around on the bus. There's piles of suitcases, you can't see the bikes that are in the aisleways. It was very in violation of, I'm sure, every traffic rule in those, in the state. But anyway, um, we did have a great time. It was a huge honor for me. Um, I had never attended, gone on a, a international trip before with the mayor. In fact, I've never been anywhere with the mayor, um, and, uh, or traveled for my job. And it was a huge honor, um, to get to represent the city of Portland on this trip. So I thank you very much.
What, what's the population of Mutari?
It's two hundred thousand.
So in wrapping up, um, as you can see, it was an amazing group of people. And it was amazing for me to see how our organization has grown in order to be able to take a group like this. Uh, and I particularly want to thank you, Mayor Potter, for supporting this and for instigating this, because we have never had an administration, a city administration, since it was founded, be interested in traveling to Zimbabwe. We realize we're one of nine sister cities, we know that. Uh, but we're one that happens to be just a humanitarian focus, and so we really appreciate that. Um, and your administration for appreciating that, or for, for, for supporting that. Um, I think, as Dana said, one of the most important things that we did was not bring, you know, thirty-seven pieces of luggage and money, but we brought ourselves. And, uh, Mishak Zamba, who is, uh, a former teacher at the school, as well as the director of the clinic, um, said to me, as he was standing next to me when we arrived, um, very thin, from starving since I have known him, he said, "Oh, Maria, thank you for bringing these people. I can't tell you how much it means to us. It means, um, more than hope, but it means luck. You bring us luck every time you come." So I just wanted to let you know that that people-to-people connection is one of the most important things. And people will frequently say, "Why do you work in Zimbabwe?" You know, as you can hear, it's a difficult country. Uh, there's so many other countries you could work in, it'd be so much easier. Why didn't you choose a different country? And I always say, you know, I didn't choose Zimbabwe, Cliff didn't choose Zimbabwe. Zimbabwe chose us, Veronica wrote us, and I think that all the people here will say that. Zimbabwe chose them also. So I know you're all sitting there saying, "Well, what can we do, you know, to continue to support you?" And I, I just want to say, to continue to support the effort of the sister cities, because that, we do- do do some tremendous work in building those bridges across the world. Please visit our website, www.africaaidesresponse.org. And lastly, as you can see, we have our World AIDS Day fundraiser. And this is where we raise the greatest portion of our funds on our trips to support the work that we do there. It will be Monday at the Tiffany Center. Starts at 4 o'clock for the Free Action Fair, as well as Speaker Michael Kaplan from the Cascade AIDS Project. We'll be followed by these wonderful youth again, giving some more presentations regarding their trips, as well as Lubnis Wesa, who will be performing Zimbabwean dance after. And as you can see with the last photo, we have had wonderful stars at our events in the past. I fondly call the "Three Mayors" photo, which is from our 2004 event when Mayor Potter was mayor-elect. As you can see on the left in the middle, Bud Clark, actually, who helped support the founding of the sister city, and our future mayor, Sam Adams, who I know will continue to support us and has been at several of our events in the past. So we hope to see you all on Monday and so appreciate your support and your time today.
Thank you, folks. Thank you very much. In conjunction with World AIDS Day on Monday, I have a proclamation to read. Whereas December 1st, 2008, is the 20th anniversary of World AIDS Day. And World AIDS Day is the day when individuals and organizations from around the world come together to bring attention to the global AIDS epidemic. And according to the latest data from the Joint United Nations Program on HIV/AIDS and the World Health Organization, there are an estimated 38.6 million people living with AIDS worldwide. And there are nearly 7,000 Oregonians currently living with AIDS/HIV. And approximately 4,000 of those are residents of the Portland metropolitan area. We share a commitment to mutual support with our sister city, Mutari/Zimbabwe, which is at the epicenter of the AIDS pandemic. And recently sent a city of Portland delegation on a humanitarian mission to Mutari with medical supplies. HIV remains a significant public health problem that requires a strong, sustained, and coordinated international, national, and local strategy. The World AIDS campaign theme for World AIDS Day in 2008 is "Leadership: Keep the Promise", and calls on political leaders to keep their commitment to provide universal access for prevention, treatment, care, and support by 2000. Now therefore, I, Tom Potter, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the city of Rosemont, do hereby proclaim December 1st, 2008, to be World AIDS Day in Portland, and I encourage all residents to observe this day. Thank you for being here today. We really appreciate it. And apologize to the council and to the audience for the length of time. Please read the 1030 Times cert.
Item 1614, Except the 2007/2008 Annual Report for the Portland Watershed Management Plan.
Mr. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Portland has six watersheds, three on the east side, three on the west side. Just to refresh everyone's memory, the Columbia Slough is the watershed that runs along the ridge of the north side of Portland. Just south of it, again on the east side, is the Lost Creeks watershed that runs basically with Burnside and Powell down the middle of it to about 122nd Street. You're going to hear about the Brooklyn Creek Basin Restoration Project, which is in the Lost Creeks watershed. And then south of Lost Creeks and the southern edge of the city is the Johnson Creek watershed. On the west side, we have the West Side Streams watershed that basically runs from Forest Park downtown and south on Barbara Boulevard. And then Fano Creek and Tryon Creek watersheds, which are the only two watersheds that don't flow into the Willamette River within the city of Portland. This has been a great year for watersheds, thanks to the support of the members of the city council and the partnership with the nonprofit community and a lot of support from businesses and the leadership of the team at Bureau of Environmental Services. With Greater Green, we have made this year the largest single commitment to watershed restoration in the history of the city. And in my three and a half years as the Commissioner in charge of Bureau of Environmental Services, I want to thank everyone in the Bureau and both of you and Mary and the whole team for all your great work on this. So today is our annual report to the city council. And we have Mike Rosen and Dean Merritt. Dean?
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Good morning to members of the council. I'm Dean Merritt, Environmental Services Director. I'm just going to introduce this. We realize that you're running short of time, so we will shorten our report. As Commissioner Adams said, two years ago, the city council adopted the Portland Watershed Management Plan. We've been busy working with all the other bureaus of city government to help implement it. And the good news is that we've been very busy and the other bureaus have been busy as well, working together. We're very pleased to also indicate that we're working well with the Bureau of Planning as they move forward with the Portland plan. We have a good working relationship with the Bureau of Planning and they are integrating the principles of watershed planning into the Portland plan so that hopefully by the time that process is finished and it comes back to you for adoption of the new Portland plan, it will embrace fully all of the key principles of sound watershed health. So we're looking forward to that. Before I turn it over to Mike Rosen, who will give you the brief summary of the report, I want to just acknowledge Matt Berlin, who's sitting right back here. A lot of times you don't get to see the people who do a lot of the heavy lifting and putting together these reports. And I want to thank Matt for his efforts on that regard. Mike?
Thank you. I'm Mike Rosen and I manage the Watershed Division for the Bureau of Environmental Services. And I will try to make up some time here for you and give you just a brief overview of what we've done in the last year. This slide I'll go through very quickly, just as the history of the watershed plan, the Resolution 36384, passed the plan in March of 2006, and we're required to come back here annually and report on implementation. As Dean said, we've had an incredibly productive year. Sam, Commissioner Adams, referred to the Greater Green Initiative. It's been a big boost for our work. So we have a lot of work underway. It's following the plan. It's having an impact. It is the work of the city. It's the work of the citizens of the city and the other bureaus. We have a very strong relationship with the River Renaissance Program and the Bureau of Planning, the Water Bureau Development Services, PDC, transportation, parks, fire, and sustainable development. We would not get our work done without them. I'd also like to acknowledge Matt. He's been great in bringing this report together and really working with the other bureaus and showing that this is a group effort. The emphasis of the report is, again, collaboration and integration of watershed health objectives into the work of the city. So doing the work of the city differently so we can advance watershed health. And again, it's not a single bureau effort. It's all the bureaus and all the citizens working together. We do talk about Greater Green. And finally, I think that one of the other emphasis of the report that's important is this green infrastructure has really taken off this year. It's critical infrastructure and the city is relying on it for essential city services. What I'll go through fairly quickly is actions, specific actions that we've accomplished or projects that we've completed in the last year. And they fall under six strategy areas that we emphasize to achieve our watershed health goals. In stormwater management, we are emphasizing improving hydrology. And that comes through infiltrating stormwater on-site. It allows us to control the volume of stormwater in our system, its velocity, it protects habitat, and it also protects pipe capacity and the life of our gray infrastructure system. A lot has happened this year. We've put in over 300 green streets, almost 400 stormwater facilities on private property. We've turned over 100 feet of ditch that just conveys water into vegetated swales. The project that I want to highlight quickly is Owens Corning. And this is particularly important because this is an area that we have a lot of potential in. It's us working with our industry. Industry typically has a large volume of parking lots and roof area that's impermeable, produces a lot of stormwater. How can we work with them to improve conditions and infiltration? Owens Corning is a northwest industrial roofing company and it has a lot of parking surface and roof surface. And we were effectively able to divert that parking lot and roof runoff into vegetated swell. And it really shows that we can do this at industrial sites. We hope to do this at other industrial sites. Many of them are on the river. This gives us an opportunity to send the stormwater back into groundwater and recharge it. Cool the water goes into the river, it's cool, recharge groundwater, and the fish love it. And we do too. Revegetation is another big area for us. It's all about planting more native plants, removing invasives, and planting trees. And you'll hear more about that later. And that allows us to absorb, capture, and cool stormwater. The project that's been really impressive, and the actions this year, again, almost 400 acres of invasive species removal, 100 acres of planted with native plants, and over 40,000 trees. We've been working on a very large and ambitious project in the Rocky Buttes natural area. It's multi-partner, multi-year, and really it's to take back an important natural resource area that has been overrun with invasives. We're working with parks, with the grotto, with State Department of Transportation, Metro, the City Bible Church. And our goal is to recover 150 acres of natural area, remove invasives and plant natives. And we've gotten a good start. Aquatic and terrestrial habitat enhancement is about repairing degraded natural areas. And that, of course, improves water quality and biodiversity. We've made a lot of gains this year. One of our flagship projects that we just completed is the Stevens Creek Confluence. It is a partnership. This work doesn't happen without partnerships. We're working, again, with parks, with state transportation, Bureau of Transportation, ODFNW, the local neighborhood associations, Friends of Trees, Willamette Riverkeeper. And we've leveraged quite a bit of money through the Lower Columbia River Estuary Project and grants, and grants from the Port and the Nature Conservancy. And this is a significant project because it's part of South Portland Riverbank. And basically what we've done is we removed a decommissioned CSO pipe, combined sewer overflow pipe, and we've restored off-channel habitat, salmon habitat, in the lower Willamette. This is one of the key limiting factors for fish in Portland. There aren't a lot of areas like this in the lower Willamette. And anytime that we have a chance to recover, enhance one of these areas, it's a big deal for us. And this has been a very successful project. Protection and policy, this is all about the most cost-effective way to protect watershed health, which is continuing to invest in changing policies and strategic and leveraged purchases of high-quality habitat. So prevention is the best way to improve watershed health versus restoration. It's very cost-effective. A big focus for us has been the Citywide Trees Project. We have very complex regulations around the city. They're hard to implement. They vary in terms of their approach to preservation and planting of trees. We're working with planning, many of the bureaus and the citizens, to examine and clarify these regulations. This is absolutely critical for us, and I'll talk about this briefly. Greater Green is going to establish, plant 83,000 trees. We need to have the best policies and code in place to preserve this investment. This is a multi-decade investment. And so this is how we're integrating our work into policy.
In fact, later in the item number 1638, we're actually authorizing a contract with Friends of Trees to move forward that piece of it.
Right, which directly comes out of the Greater Green Initiative. Operations and maintenance, it's not sexy, but it's absolutely, well, usually, absolutely important to watershed health improvement because it's about taking our assets and keeping them in good working order so they protect water quality and habitat functions. The one project I want to highlight is the Portland Public Schools Stormwater Facility Maintenance Project. We have over 30 facilities in schools throughout the city that infiltrate stormwater. So we are managing a lot of stormwater with these properties. We're also creating a great education opportunity for the residents of our neighborhoods and the pupils in these schools. And then finally, we provide a lot of green space through these facilities. A lot of schools, I think we've noticed, there's a lot of blacktop and parking lot, and we're opening up the green environment there. The challenge is that we want to build more of these facilities and we have to maintain and operate these facilities effectively. So we provided a grant to Portland Public Schools to investigate the most cost-effective way to perform operation and maintenance that provides for long life of the facilities in a cost-effective approach. A lot of times we're integrating the volunteers from the neighborhoods. And there are different ways to do this. And we hope to come up with a strategy recommended by Portland Public Schools that'll allow us to continue to build more of these facilities. You've heard a lot about our education and involvement work. And we came here not too long ago and told you about the Community Watershed Stewardship Grant Program, which won a significant award this year from the Carter, Jimmy and Rosalind Carter Partnership for Campus and Community Collaboration with PSU. And I'll just jump right to the statistics. 13 stewardship grants this year for over $60,000. We've reached 26,000 students through our Clean Rivers Education Program, 40,000 participants in education events throughout the city. And one thing that we're particularly proud of is we're getting a lot of activity, 180,000 hits on our websites. People are coming to the city websites to learn about these systems. And this is a long-term investment because sustained watershed health is going to come from an engaged and a participatory community. They're taking personal responsibility for watershed health by putting these systems in, and they're making these investments. And that's what that strategy supports. I'm going to close with just two quick overviews of critical programs that have already been briefly mentioned. Brooklyn Creek Basin Program. This is a partnership to do area-wide creative stormwater management in Portland, collaborating with a variety of bureaus, and achieving multiple benefits for infrastructure repair and development. We're working with transportation, water, parks, development services, and we have a huge involvement component through the community. We're putting in 600 infiltration facilities. 100 will be put in on private property. So we're working very closely with residents. It's over two square miles that we're working on in southwest Portland. It goes from Mount Tabor to the Willamette River and it runs between Hawthorne and southeast Powell. The problem is basement flooding, combined sewer capacity, and sewer lines that need repair. And what we're doing differently is instead of just going in and replacing all the pipes, we're replacing the pipes that aren't functioning, but we're taking pipes that are functioning but don't have enough capacity for stormwater, and we're augmenting that capacity with the 600 infiltration facilities. Green streets, planters, swales, curb bump outs.
Hey, Mike. Why you got that picture up there of this infiltration? That's what you call the planting along the curb?
Yeah. Yeah, a bump out.
Okay, so I see, you know, we're doing the same thing on southwest Fifth Avenue here. I see plantings going on, but I'm not seeing any curb cuts that would allow. Is it not allowed?
It's not a swale.
It's not a swale?
No, it's, they're planting it with species of plants that don't need to be watered, but they're not swales.
Is that because of the downtown environment or?
It's in part because of the downtown environment. And by the time we inherited the project, it was too far along on its design. We fought for it, but we weren't successful at it.
So some of the stuff that you're seeing is stuff that we hope in areas of concentrated business and transportation to find those opportunities. But Sam's right, we only got so far on downtown transportation, this shot. What I was going to finally just say is it costs $63 million less to do this project by integrating green infrastructure into the gray piped infrastructure. But it's not just about the dollars that we're saving. It's about increasing livability in our communities by adding these amenities. And these amenities add a variety of services that are very important to the city. Livability in terms of quality of life, cooling the city, shading from trees, improving air quality. So what's happening is we're still growing, but we're improving livability. And it comes through the integration of this green infrastructure. So this green infrastructure in a project like Brooklyn Creek Basin is being relied upon to deliver essential city services and functions. We will, by this time next year, have 70 facilities in. In total, I said, we'll put in 600 infiltration facilities, more than 4,000 trees. It's a very big deal for us, and it's well underway. And then finally, the Greater Green Initiative, which Sam mentioned, it's an investment of 50- it's an investment of $50 million over the next five years, many more acres of eco roofs, hundreds of green streets, tens of thousands of trees, and you'll hear more about how that's going to happen through contracting later, purchasing lands for protection, putting in culverts, removal of invasives. This works, and that's why we're investing in this kind of infrastructure. And ultimately, what we're achieving here is we're increasing the capacity and resilience of our city, not only of the gray infrastructure, but also we're providing important services for cleaner air and water, reduced urban temperatures, better habitat, and a buffer for some of the impacts of global warming.
So by comparison, Commissioner Fish wasn't here, we have, I think, six acres of eco roofs right now in the city of Portland. We hope to get to 43 acres.
We have a great team that's working on it. We have projects underway, and we're very excited about what we're doing, and we've hit the ground running, and a lot of it's been from the supportive council, Sam and Lisa Libby, so thank you. And then, in closing, we usually close with a fish. This is a rainbow, wait, I have the wrong slide. This is a cutthroat trout. It's a 12-inch cutthroat trout from the Schweitzer Restoration Project, and these are the results we're seeing. We are finding fish where we haven't found them before, and we're finding fish in places where people are not expecting to find them. So we're very happy about what we're doing, and we appreciate all your support. Thank you.
Finding fish on the city council.
We didn't expect that.
Some people are still surprised that I'm sitting here. Catch and release.
I think we'll keep this. Be happy to answer any questions.
If I could ask a couple of questions, and first of all, gentlemen, it's a superb report, and congratulations on both the work product and on the thinking that's gone behind the strategies. Two particular items of interest to me. One is the challenge of invasive species in Forest Park. There was a news story not long ago saying that it would take probably 100 people, 10 years, just to tackle the problem. Is that part of your jurisdiction, or is it exclusively a matter of the Parks Bureau to deal with that issue?
I think I'd actually like to defer to Commissioner Adams, who helped organize a summit meeting just recently on invasives.
So we, last week, we had our, was it last week or the week before? We had our second invasive species summit. The city has hired as part of the initial work on this, an invasive species czar, Jennifer Goodrich, who established the baseline, working with all the bureaus. And what it showed, what it quantified was the daunting task in front of us, and it is incredibly daunting. Whoever gets the Bureau of Environmental Services will need to, the assignment will need to work with parks and everyone else on addressing, having established the baseline of where it's at and what kind of invasives are ruining, what part of our natural areas and parks. We're going to have to figure out the strategy for eradicating it. It is really bad, and it makes no sense to go to all this effort to procure additional natural escape, natural areas, parks, and just have it overtaken by invasives, but the onslaught is unrelenting.
Well, perhaps, hopefully, we can find a good corporate citizen that'll come forward to help us with part of this. And in the challenging times we're in, it may even call for a civilian conservation corps concept to get people into places like Forest Park.
I think we're intrigued by that idea, yeah, because as you said, a lot of this just requires physical labor out there to do the work.
The second issue I wanted just to touch base on has to do with Strategies 1 and 5, and particularly, the slide that you showed on Mount Tabor, the Mount Tabor, is it middle school?
Middle school.
Middle school, and the rain garden. And it reminded me of what I've seen at Astor Elementary School in North Portland, where they have a community water garden, but the same concept. It is a stormwater management plan, but it's also a laboratory for the students.
Exactly.
Elementary and middle schools throughout the city have the same challenge. They've just got lots of blacktop and not enough green. And I'm delighted to hear that there's 30 programs with Portland Public Schools. Just two comments. One is, I would think this is a strategy that we'd want to develop and not defer to Portland Public Schools. They are overwhelmed with their core mission, which is the classroom instruction, and I hope that, as the mayor-elect leads the Portland Plan, I hope it's something that we can take the lead on. And it seems like a unique opportunity for parks and BES and schools to work on this. And one thing, Commissioner Cogan and I were at an elementary school, the Lee School, in outer southeast a couple of weeks ago, and it was interesting. The principal is a school surrounded by blacktop, and then the obligatory soccer field, it's in terrible condition, attached to it. Biggest problem that he has is getting parents to be involved in the program, in the school. It's a changing area, hardworking people. He has difficulty getting parents into the school, and on the weekends, the site is not used.
Right.
And it seems like nothing would be more productive in terms of both meeting the stormwater management goals that you've laid out, and also building community, than to have like a water garden, or a rain garden, or something that the community then embraces and maintains, which goes to your other issue you raised about
Right.
How did the challenge of building and maintaining and operating. So
Well, Commissioner, those are
Depending on where all the bureaus end up, it's something that I am extremely interested in working with you on.
It's a very, it's a very good point.
I think since I've been BES Commissioner, I've inaugurated four or five school-based facilities, and it's just a question of resources, not a question of desire. Same with invasives. You know, we use, you're right on point. We use prisoners, you know, and work release. It's a question of resources.
The one thing I will say about Astor Elementary School that made it, I think, kind of unique was Walsh Construction came in and actually took up the blacktop, and then they recycled it in paving the new Columbia. Now, they still ended up in the short end of that deal, but it was an example of a true community partnership to help facilitate.
Yes. And let me just be clear on the work we're doing with Portland Public Schools. We haven't said to them that the maintenance of these facilities is your problem. When you figure it out, come talk to us. We are working hand-in-hand with them. We have, excuse me, we've actually provided them a grant so they could hire someone for a year to represent their interests in discussions with us on how to best maintain these facilities. So we're working closely with them on this question.
And the final question I had is, the word infiltration is a mouthful. When we're out talking about this in the public, what's the plain English equivalent that we can use that communicates this? Is it just green roads or swales, or is there some concept that's easier to digest than that?
Than an infiltration facility?
It just sounds, it sounds, you showed us a picture of an infiltration facility.
It's swale.
It seemed like the neighborhood might want to oppose and not embrace.
Interesting. Yeah, no.
Yeah.
Swale, and it's all about absorbing water.
Natural feature.
Yeah, mimicking the natural environment. Water coming back into the ground where it falls, instead of being put in a pipe and sent away.
Well, we have a lot of them now in Hollywood, Grant Park, thanks to PDOT and to BES, and it's, actually, as I wait for my bus in the morning, there's a swale, and benches, and something going on there, so it is a great amenity.
The facility formerly known as infiltration.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Good work.
This is report. I need a motion to accept.
Motion?
Second. Please call the vote.
Adams?
I want to, in addition to thanking the Bureau and all of our nonprofit and private partners, we hustle to get, in almost every project we do, we always have to hustle to get nonprofit help and private sector assistance as well. And because of that, we're able to stretch the meager dollars a long, long way. So thanks to all of you to help, helping make sure in your team that that happens. I also want to thank Lisa Libby, who has been absolutely key in getting the Great to Green project done. Really appreciate your work. It was fantastic. And to the city council that has been so incredibly supportive over the past three and a half years. Aye.
Fish?
Want to acknowledge Commissioner Adams' leadership on this, and also thank Dean Marriott and his team for superb work. And my neighborhood in the Grant Park area is an example of an area that's been enhanced by some of the Greater Green work that you're doing. And it seems like this overall initiative is the next key wave here, and I look forward to supporting you as you go forward. Aye.
Saltzman?
Well, this is a great report, and a lot of specifics. You know, I want to commend Bureau of Environmental Services, Commissioner Adams' office, Lisa Libby, for their great work here. Obviously, the very precise metrics you have are a reflection of your commissioner-in-charge. And they're good, and they're very tangible. And I think that, you know, the whole effort, the whole Greater Green Initiative, I think just the whole idea that we can refinance some of our bonded indebtedness and use that increment to invest in cost-effective stormwater solutions that mimic the natural environment or recreate the natural environment is what people are looking for in this city. And I think what this nation's looking for, but again, I think Portland is way out in front here, and I appreciate the leadership in all this. Please to vote aye.
Potter?
I think it's an excellent report. Dean, you and your staff did a great job. Commissioner Adams, thank you for your leadership. Libby, this is the kind of product, I think, that Portlanders get used to, but they don't see all the work that goes into it and the amount of trying to stretch those dollars, as Commissioner Adams pointed out. Thank you all. I vote Please read, go to the regular agenda, read item 1633.
Authorize an intergovernmental agreement with Monloma County to fund treatment services and alternatives to prostitution.
This is an intergovernmental agreement with Monloma County, and it's administered through to Life Works. It goes to some of the questions that were raised earlier through the folks who came to speak at council regarding prostitution on 82nd, and that, I know there's a lot of frustration out in the community with this, but there's also a lot of good work being done by the Police Bureau, as well as the criminal justice system. What this does is provide an alternative to prostitutes, to get them out of their work, provide them housing treatment, and ensure that they have a chance to escape what many consider to be a form of modern-day slavery. So with that, I'd like to call up staff. Prior to that, though, there is an amendment to Exhibit A, and it fixes some typos and other things, but it doesn't really affect the goals or the details of the work. I need a motion to accept the amendment?
Second.
Second.
Please call the vote.
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye. Commander?
Well, good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Mike Kreb. I'm the commander of East Precinct, and I've been taking the lead for the prostitution problem on the east side of Portland, mostly 82nd Avenue. With me, next to me to my left, is Kathleen Trebb, the Assistant Director of the Department of Community Justice. We've been working together to find ways to give prostitutes some treatment so they can get out of the prostitution business. Back in August, as you heard earlier, the prostitution problem on 82nd Avenue has, it's significantly increased over the last year. And what we did, we did a survey. We wanted to find out why the prostitutes were going to 82nd Avenue, why they were in prostitution. So we did six missions over a 10-day period, and then went to a survey as we arrested them. And we asked them, why do they work as a prostitute? And they indicated that money, food, support their family, to support their pimp. So many of these women are compelled to be prostitutes by their pimp. And some of them even made the indication they liked the shop. And we found that it runs a gamut of ages from age 13 to 50. And we asked them also where they came from, and many of them said they prostituted before in Florida, Hawaii, San Francisco, Seattle, Tacoma. Said they were coming from all parts of the, I guess, the country, come to do prostitution activities here. And we found that, we asked them, why 82nd Avenue? They said, well, it goes for miles. It's easy pickin'. It's, people drive by all the time. It's easy to get what they refer to as tricks. We also asked them some questions about how did they get into prostitution? And they said that one of them was, my mom was a prostitute, so I became a prostitute. One of them indicated that her stepfather got her into it. Another one said that through addiction. So we found that there's women that were forced into it by a parent, an uncle, and there's a lot of victims out there, and they need some treatment for these individuals. We then asked them the question about what social services could we give you to help you maybe get out of prostitution? They indicated housing, counseling, medical help, and finding a real job. Many of these people have very little life skills, and so a big part of our project was to, we've been arresting, trying to arrest our way out of this problem, and it's not going to happen. And we're here today to ask you for funds to provide treatment for these women. We sent out an RFP, Request for Proposal for Prostitution Treatment, and Life Works Northwest came to the top. They've been in the business for a lot of years, over 45 years. Life Works Northwest have been in the business of helping people. Back in the 90s and the early 2000s, they had a program called New Options for Women, and the funding went away, and now we're going to try to refund that and get that started again. And Kathleen Trebb, who runs many of the treatment programs for the county, has a lot of experience in not only writing up these contracts with Life Works Northwest, but monitoring the contract to make sure they're carrying out what they're supposed to be doing. And one of the big pieces of Life Works Northwest and with this contract is they become part of the service coordination team. Down at Central Precinct, they have a coordination team where the police, the district attorney, the treatment program, and the probation officials work together to give individual treatment and help people get off the streets. So I'll let Kathleen speak further about some of the things they've been doing and more about the contract.
Actually, I'll just give you the three objectives that the contract would have. One would be to provide onsite integrated trauma, mental health, and drug alcohol addiction screening, assessment, and treatment for women and girls. They think the majority will be for adults. To address criminality and reduce recidivism, of course, the outcomes for any criminal justice program, and provide coordinated case management services to reduce barriers to treatment, success, and long-term recovery, including housing, employment, education, and social support. This is what New Options for Women proposes to do. They think people will stay an average of about nine months. You know, this is a very complex program, and I was actually laughing as I was coming over here. I ran into Joanne Fuller, and we've worked together for very long, and we said, you know, we did this with the city last, in 1985. We funded a program for prostitutes, city and county together. Then, you know, through a lot of budget cuts, things changed, and we stopped, but really, the problems have not changed. Maybe how people do it, how you advertise, where you advertise, but the problems are still as complex as they were in 1985. And again, it's not something just the criminal justice system can take care of. So that's the proposal.
So how will we measure results, success, progress?
I can tell you how all of our programs do so far, and we've not, until the IGA, we have not negotiated all that yet. But for us, one of them really will be reduced recidivism, reduced arrest. That's the major outcome for our other programs. It's also, is there an increase in stability of housing? Is there an increase in stability of employment? It's not saying that somebody's going to go from no employment and living on the streets to having, you know, the white picket fence and, you know, making $100,000 a year, but are there small incremental changes? And then also, is there a change, and we're not sure how we're going to do this yet, of what we call pro-social activities, pro-social support, pro-social thinking, meaning that they're not hanging out with the same people who, you know, they've been hanging out with forever. The other part that's not part of this contract that I just wanted to mention is that I'm hoping, since our department really supervises, if pimps happen to be on supervision, we are the ones who usually supervise them. And I'm really hoping that this can be a more comprehensive strategy to work with this issue, and not just work with the prostitutes, but with the pimps, not giving them services, but what can we do together to really make sure we can address this issue?
What, in terms of, one of the tools that I've thought would be useful on 82nd Avenue, if we would establish a enhanced enforcement zone, a coordination service zone, some geographic definition to this, so that the neighbors are assured that within that boundary, these are our efforts.
Right.
What are your thoughts on that?
What we're going to do, sir, is that part of the treatment program, we want to place the prostitutes and the johns on probation. Once they're placed on bench probation, the judge will then give them conditions to stay out of certain areas of town. And if they were observed in those areas of town or engaging in criminal And if they were observing those areas of town or engaging in criminal activity or violating their restrictions, the police could arrest them on sight and take them to jail on a detainer. And I think that one of the things, prostitution free zone went away, but I think placing them on probation will allow us to arrest them citywide if they continue to violate. That was kind of a weakness of the prostitution free zone, is they would infiltrate into the, get out of the zone and go someplace else. And I think that if we can get them on probation, we can actually, you know, make sure that they're followed around the entire city.
Do you have stats on how things are going on 82nd Avenue, trends?
I do. A lot of it is, a lot of it right now, we've arrested over 201 people since, from August 13th to November 14th. We continue to run one mission a week. We have a detail car that runs 10 hours a day, seven days a week, reports back from the citizens. I was even talking to the two women that spoke here earlier, and they told me they've seen a significant decrease in the prostitution problem recently with the missions we've been running and the police presence. But that's not going to be sustainable. We need the treatment. Because if we can arrest them all day long, we've got to find some ways to sustain them, get them out of the business, so that we can then reduce the resources that we're using there. So.
And again, the idea of putting a boundary around this enhanced services, or whatever you want to call it, are you supportive of that?
About, you know, I think that what I'm afraid, if we put a boundary, I think that by putting them on probation, we can be able to track them citywide. If we put boundaries, because if we put pressure on them, they're going to find new places to go. In fact, they have been dwelling down the interstate. And one thing, if you have them on probation, we go back to the judge, and we ask them to put additional restrictions. Now we need them to stay off of Interstate Avenue. Now we need them to stay off of Sandy Boulevard.
I agree, we should continue to follow them, but what I haven't seen, that I'd like to see, is you tell me the area that you're providing enhanced services, and then we're able to better track calls for service. You've talked about 201 arrests. I don't have a sense of what the trend is. I assume it's a lot more than it has been. But I need to understand what's going on in terms of the trends, in terms of reported, actual, and in order to do that, you've got to draw a line on a map.
Correct. I understand, I understand. I would be in favor of that, then, because I think it'd be important for you guys to see, are we having an impact, yes or no? And we pretty much know which areas of town they seem to attract to. It's usually Sandy Boulevard, 82nd Avenue, Interstate. I would agree with you, that would be a good idea.
One of the problems with the prostitution free zone is that it designated a geographical area, and the pressure was applied there, and what it did is displace the problem to other areas.
Correct.
And so, the only way we could correct that is, once a year, come in to council with the new stats and then request a boundary change on the zones. It's a very hard, hardened approach, in the sense that it's so rigid in how it's applied.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting bringing that back, but I am suggesting that we know the target areas and the boundaries of the target areas, and we are monitoring, because we do know, I've been around long enough to know, you push it somewhere, eventually, you know, they go somewhere else. They'll eventually show up potentially on West Burnside again. If you've got all the east side sort of hotspots clamped down, it would be nice to know that we've got sort of those monitoring zones, and we're looking at them all the time, so that as we see it uptick a little, we're on top of it, as opposed to waiting until it's a big tidal wave of prostitution and drugs.
So I get a sense that we would give you, we can give you stats on Burnside, give you stats on Interstate, give you stats on Sandy, give you stats on 82nd, to make sure we're not just placing it someplace out and suddenly popping up.
Yeah, you know the usual places, that when you push one place, they tend to go another because of the physical attributes of a quarter.
I think we could do that, and that would allow us to see if we're dispersing the problem or not, and we could use that to disperse our resources where necessary. And I think it's a moving target, because
Absolutely.
We learned with the prostitution free zones that they move. We put pressure, they move, and there may be even some new ones that pop up if we press too hard on some of these areas. And I think that we could, you know, like, watching stats in certain areas, we could give you an idea of if it's getting better or worse.
That would be great.
I think it's going to go to the internet.
Commander, in 96 and 97, there was, just from my anecdotal, from what I observed, there was much more activity along Sandy Boulevard, particularly west of 42nd, and it was much more open, and there was a lot more activity, more people on the street. I drive Sandy a lot. My sense is it's been curtailed quite a bit. First of all, does the data support that? And if so, to what do you attribute that?
Well, we put a lot of pressure on Sandy Boulevard many years ago, and we pushed into 82nd Avenue. And so, it is clearly 82nd Avenue is the problem, and attribute it to, you know, moving them is through enforcement only right now. And what I find, we do enforcement, as soon as we leave, it comes back. If we were to suddenly leave right now, it would go back to Sandy Boulevard. It would go back to 82nd Avenue.
That's why, I think that's why the ongoing monitor, monitoring of quarters, if, you know, the sooner we can get on top of sort of its movement, the more, I think, unwelcome we will be as a city. I mean, they can find a different place.
Another thing we're also doing, too, I've talked with Commissioner Saltzman and Brian Wong, who's part of Montevilla in Action, and we're going to put together an oversight group with citizens from Madison South, Lents Neighborhood Association, and Palhurst Gilbert, and have them tell us what's going on, only quarterly, to discuss and look at the treatment program, the police response, district attorney's response, and also the resources by city council to find out if we are, I guess, meeting our commitment to curtail the prostitution problem. Because I have never felt so much passion in my life going to people's homes in the meetings. This is ruining the livability of people's neighborhoods. As Carol Seema had said, she comes out and there's people in their front yard, you know, engaging in improper activities, and it just ruins everything. And I've, well, first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to even do this. I feel very fortunate that I'm able to have the resources to push on this problem and then actually go back and see their faces, if they actually feel safe to go outside again. So.
So, thanks for mentioning this oversight committee. This is something we'll be bringing to council, I think, in the next couple of weeks.
December 10th.
Oh, we have a date, okay. December 10th. But I guess I was curious, to get into the treatment program, you have to be arrested and placed on bench probation? Is that sort of the gateway to this?
Well, that's one of the pieces, sir. What happens is, we want to make sure, because first of all, to get them on probation, we have to convince the judges that we have something for them. If we just bring them and say, we want them on probation so we can re-arrest them, they're probably not going to do that. So one of the biggest pieces is have this in place, so the judges will be more likely to put them on probation. That's one piece. We, as the police, can also, if we see a woman on the street, we don't have to arrest her to refer to LifeWorks Northwest. I see a time where an officer might know someone and says, hey, do you want to get out of this business? Get in my car, I'll drive to LifeWorks Northwest right now. I see a time when DCJ, if they have someone who's in their system who needs some assistance, they can refer them to LifeWorks Northwest. LifeWorks Northwest, if they have someone there they're working with who has not been arrested, but they think might be engaging in prostitution, can refer them to LifeWorks Northwest. But isn't just, the only way you get into this program is to be arrested. We want to help them get off the street before they are arrested, if possible. So there's numerous avenues for them to get into. We want to leave it open as much as possible.
And the other thing Mr. Trebb mentioned was that there would be an onsite, a site somewhere where women would go to. Is this something that LifeWorks already has?
Right. Correct. It's actually an outpatient, they already provide the majority, a lot of outpatient treatment in this community, and they have actually two places in the southeast, and we're really working with them to decide which one would be best. We want to look at things like bus routes for prostitutes to get there, where do the pimps live, I mean, just some safety things.
Okay. Thanks.
The exciting thing about this project that I didn't say is they're going to have a mentor, and more and more literature is saying, if you have some paraprofessional recovery support, you're apt to do better. It's not just, I mean, kind of, I think of my own life, you know, if I just go to counseling, that's just not enough. Sometimes I need people with life skills who are going to kind of teach me how to go and get jobs. I don't need a high-paid therapist to do that sometime. I need somebody to take my hand and say, we're going to go now to the one stop and apply for jobs. And this is, for me, a part that's very exciting about this project that they were not able to do last time, is they will hire a mentor, and that will be, I think, very good. That'll be the main person who will be working with Mike's staff.
Commander, if we view the prostitute as a victim in this system, and we see the, we look at the John as the customer and someone that perhaps we can deter through some public shaming that falls within constitutional bounds, the pimp is really the principal wrongdoer, I suppose. And you earlier said, just in passing, that you're seeing young women as young as 13 on the streets.
Correct.
Now, are we seeing a trend towards more minors? Any data, one way or another, on that?
You know, it's very small. It's a small piece, but the sad thing is, it's a really bad piece. I mean, it may be only maybe, I think we have arrested so far 11 young women out there under the age of 18. We've only had a few of them in that lower range, you know, 13, 14, 15. Most of them are closer to 18. But it's not, I don't see an alarming trend that is going up. I'm not seeing that.
Any evidence that any of these minors are kids from any of the local schools?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. They're definitely from local schools. I mean, we have had, we've actually had some training for our school resource officers, because these pimps do go to schools, the local schools, and they do recruit these young girls. They look for the girl who's walking with her head down, walking by herself, the person who appears to have low self-esteem, and this pimp comes here, kind of the, you know, her savior or guardian, going to come in there and, hey, you're really beautiful, why don't you be with me? I can help you out. And they basically groom them to become one of their people. And it isn't necessarily on 82nd Avenue, but it's also on the internet. You know, you have people purchasing, I think, if we put pressure on the street, you're going to see more and more of them are going to the internet. That's going to be the next step they're going to take.
And I'm not, just off the top of my head, familiar with all the laws that we use to criminalize this behavior, but I assume that for a pimp that is working with a minor, that there are enhanced punishments that can be brought to bear for that crime?
Correct. We have, any kind of pimp activity, we call it compelling prostitution, is a felony. We're working closely with the U.S. Attorney's Office to prosecute the pimps as felons. The first sentence is 10 years, the second is 15. And they have some human trafficking laws in the federal books that if you're under the age of 18, all they really have to prove is, not much at all, you're under 18, you even, you can't consent. Because one of the problems with prosecuting pimps is proving that there was, it was done by compulsion, whereas you're under the age of 18, it's easy to prove, because your certificate says you're under 18, so you're compelled. And they take, they have about, last I heard, it was like nine or 10 that they had in the hopper there, working on these pimps that had been trafficking young women.
And there's enhanced federal penalties that can be brought?
First time, 10 years, second time, 15. That is huge, I think.
Thank you.
I mean, compared to state law, we're talking, you know, three or four years possibly, but if you get on a federal charge, that's 10 years right off the bat. And that's, they apologized on one, and they said we can only get seven and a half on one guy, which is, that's huge.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Good work.
Thanks.
Is there anyone signed up to testify on this issue?
We have one person signed up, Teresa Teeter.
Just to start with, my great-grandmother ran a brothel in Lincoln, Nebraska, years ago, like 1950s, and it was across the street from the Greyhound bus station. So this ties in with your transportation issue that I was going to bring up later, because I ride Trimat on 82nd Avenue, and take the MAX out there with my bike, take the bike up the elevator, cross the street to get on the bus to go up to some fabric stores on 82nd. And the prostitutes get on the bus on 82nd, right at the area I do buy the MAX platform, you know, up on the 82nd Street level, and they'll ride two or three blocks and get off. And they stay up front by the driver so they can look for their pimp's car parked around the corner. And I've been noticing this for about five months, and I've been going to a lot of fabric stores out there, so I've been noticing patterns on the bus. So you have a venue to use some of the camera tape on the Trimat buses, is the point I'm getting to. Okay, now I have a list here for you. My first thought is, you need to create a task force, so that, like we did with the Mental Health Commission we had here a few years ago, because my suggestion is, excuse me, to get these, some of these task force members to get in front of the state legislature to change the state law, and Commander Krebs mentioned this, to criminalize the use of a car to commit sex crimes, and end that criminalization of using the car. You can confiscate the vehicle to sell to fund the recovery programs that you're running. Then you can also get the car insurance carrier to drop the person using the vehicle, or the county, whoever is funding the program, can sue the car insurance carrier. These are things you need to amend into your city charter, your amendments, something, so that you have some power to grab these vehicles. Let's see, funding for the police budget from intergovernmental task force, you can ask for U.S. Department of Justice grants. When I worked at Volunteers of America, over here on Fifth and Adler, the women were placed in jail for a certain amount of time to serve out sentence for prostitution, drug bust, et cetera. And the last six months of their sentence was commuted to our facility, and they had to stay locked in and go through all the recovery points that this lady here mentioned earlier, the self-esteem and getting re-acclimated to society, et cetera. I would suggest that you start asking your State Department of Justice new attorney, John Kroger, right now, for funds that he could get through your police departments, because, you know, he knows how to do this stuff from Washington, D.C., with Enron and things like that, from his training on where funds are available. You also need to be asking new Senator-elect Jeff Merkley and Congressman Kurt Schrader. You need to go back to the well over and over, because these guys are going to work their tails off the first year in office to get you what you want, because you're his new constituents. You need to look at Dateline NBC's overseas child prostitute recovery programs, it's on their archives of what they've done to young girls that were victimized from men from America going over there. You also need to create tax, I'm going to give you a couple, 30 more seconds, tax write-off initiatives for persons who step up to help provide funding for your recovery services, like different things, like the gentleman who gave you your $8 million for your park, Mr. Moyer, people like that.
Teresa, you're going to have to wind it up.
Yeah, I am. It helps clear off your city streets downtown. Okay, and then I'm suggesting you create all of Multnomah County as a pimp-free zone from border to border, and then double the fines in school areas, and that's it. I got it all.
Thank you.
And I will Xerox this side for you, for your future. Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Is there anyone here in this room who wishes to testify to this specific issue? Please call the vote.
Adams?
Well, I want to thank you, Commander, and our partners with the county and the mayor for his, and his staff for his work on this. It's really important to me that we establish those quarters to monitor, because good work in this quarter, hopefully some of it will, and the reason I'm so supportive of this approach is we're going after the problem, not just move it in and around, but inevitably some of it will move around, so staying on top of it, I think, is going to be really important. Thank you.
Aye.
Fish?
Well, I want to begin by thanking the community members that staged the prostitution town hall, that for those of us that were able to attend, was not only an eye-opening forum, but gave us the information we needed as policymakers to begin to craft a solution. So I thank all the folks from Madison South and Montevilla in Action and Lents and everywhere up and down 82nd, and also Commander Krebs for his leadership on this issue. I also want to acknowledge Jerry Williams, who has spoken passionately at these forums, a very dedicated city employee, and has helped me understand the dynamics at a deeper level. Today, we are not going to resolve the debate as between whether a prostitution-free zone is a better way of addressing this problem than this approach. And I have come to realize there are very passionate people on all sides of this, and people of goodwill. What we are going to do today, though, is we're going to move the ball. We're going to take some action, and hopefully it will head us in a productive area. I think this approach is sound. I have extensive history prior to coming to council with LifeWorks Northwest. They are a hugely successful nonprofit provider of many kinds of services in our community, so I was delighted that they are contracting party. I believe the council is interested in continuing to find ways of applying pressure to the Johns as we look at the economy of prostitution, and to find constitutional ways to shame and bring other resources to bear, so that we discourage the behavior. On the other hand, what we know is, as we move it from one location to another, what we are going to find ultimately is it's going to continue to go underground, and it's going to surface in places like bookstores and movie theaters and other places. So we're going to have to be ever vigilant. Mayor, thank you for your leadership on this issue, and I think it does promise a path to addressing and hopefully ameliorating the situation that is intolerable along 82nd, and I can speak from my own personal experience. And I can speak from my own personal experience in dealing with this issue along Sandy and seeing the pimps and the prostitutes come into the Starbucks there and the changing of the shifts while I was taking the bus downtown and the folks that I saw. It's tragic and it's outrageous. And it's, when you end up going to your local park and you see crack vials and you see condoms and other things, it, it, it is discouraging and it's, no matter who you are, this is, this is, this is a challenge to your quality of life. I think, though, this is a sensible approach, and we ought to give it some time to see whether it works. Aye.
Saltzman?
Well, I want to, you know, thank the mayor for his leadership in this. And I also wanted to note that this contract is a pass-through. Multnomah County collects no administrative overhead for this, so I want to thank the county. This whole $250,000 goes to Life Works. Thank Commander Krebs. I bet he was a hard-nosed negotiator on that point. Anyway, I can't help but note the Krebs and Treb team here. That's great. But I do think this, you know, one of the things that the mayor and I both learned at the attendance of the local Public Safety Coordinating Committee last month was, you know, the issue of Craigslist being such a prevalent source of prostitution online these days. And shortly after our meeting, I think Mayor Potter deserves the credit for this, but Craigslist announced that they were now going to require people who wanted to advertise to have a credit card, a bona fide credit card account. And they think that will pretty much shut down the advertising for prostitution on Craigslist. We'll see, but we'll also be interested to see how that affects maybe street-level prostitution as well. But that's something we'll watch closely, and I appreciate, you know, all the good comments that were made today. Please to vote, vote aye.
Potter?
Well, I'm very pleased to vote aye today too because, actually, I, in 1991, I think, or '92, when this began, I was the chief of police. And I felt at the time that this was a, a method or a way to try to deal with prostitution, which was a big issue then. And as I came back as mayor and I observed what was going on, and I look at the statistics, and I found that unfortunately, it tended to displace the problem, not fix it. And also, I think even more unfortunate is that it did very little, if nothing, for the prostitutes themselves to leave that, that work. So I felt as if it were addressing a symptom, not a cause. I know there's a lot of frustration in the community with this, but I think it's important that we approach it from a problem-solving perspective, not just one of trying to banish it to the next neighborhood. So I'm very supportive of this. I think that, I'm very pleased that, that Commissioner Saltzman, who will be the incoming Commissioner of Police, is supportive of this because to me, this is, this is problem-solving in its best. I really want to thank Commander Krebs and his staff at East Precinct. They've done a great job, and I really appreciate the hard work that your folks have put to this and your personal commitment, Mike, to see it through. So thank you for that, and I vote aye.
Please read item 1634.
Authorize settlement with Rocky Balata regarding disability benefit and employment claims.
Linda Jefferson and Stephanie Harper, please come forward.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. I'm Linda Jefferson, Director of the Bureau of Fire and Police Disability and Retirement.
Good morning. I'm Stephanie Harper with the City Attorney's Office. We are here today requesting that you approve a recommendation to settle disability and employment claims of Rocky Balata. Chapter 5 of the city charter gives FPDNR Fund Administrator authority to settle and discharge all or part of future obligations to a member for disability benefit claims with city council approval. Parties met in mediation on September 26th with Mr. Balata and his attorney, with a former judge as our mediator, and we reached agreement, subject to council approval, that would result in Mr. Balata's retirement effective September 1, 2006, ends all disability claim issues, ends all employment rights, including any return-to-work issues, waives the right to post-retirement medical benefits, we achieve certainty of retirement, eliminates any possibility of working for the city again. And the Portland Police Association agreed and did sign the agreement, but this agreement sets no precedent for collective bargaining purposes. In exchange, there would be a payment made to Mr. Balata of $92,300 in disability benefits and $500 to resolve and waive any and all employment rights. Any settlement involving employment and disability benefits is highly individualized and unique to the circumstances of the particular case, including the employee issues, medical issues, medical opinions, claim management, the work environment, and the scrutiny and thoughtful attention that City Council has given to this settlement. Recommendation, I think, sends the message clearly that council does not approve these kinds of settlements lightly. So with that, we think the message has been sent loud and clear that you expect staff to aggressively develop and use mechanisms to prevent any sort of abuse of our systems in place. And our post-2006 FPDNR reform measures, I think, are moving to do just that.
Questions from the Commissioners? Thank you. Is there anyone signed up to testify on this matter?
No one signed up.
Is there anyone in this room who wishes to testify to this specific issue? It's a non-emergency and moves to a second reading. Please read item 1635.
Adopt the budget calendar for fiscal year 2009, 2010.
Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Casey Short, Financial Planning Manager. There is a substitute resolution that you should have before you that just changes some of the dates. And I'd like to request that that be introduced and that become the subject of what we're discussing here. This is something we do every year. We've been doing it since 2003. The council adopts a budget calendar. It's a recommendation of our professional agency, the Government Finance Officers Association. Salient points of the substitute resolution are that we got, we have requested and been granted a two-week extension of the deadline for turning in the budget to the Tax Supervising and Conservation Commission. And we've used those extra two weeks to give bureaus a little more time to submit their budgets. They'll have until February 2nd. Financial Planning has a little more time to finish its reviews, and the mayor will have an extra week to make his decisions on his proposed budget and moves the rest of the calendar back accordingly. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions? Do I hear a motion to substitute the resolution? Motion? Second. Please call a vote.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye. Actually, I forgot to ask if there was anybody that signed up to testify.
No one signed up.
Good. Okay, thank you. Now, now we vote on the substitute. Now we vote on it.
The new one.
Are there, is there anyone here to testify on this issue?
No one signed up.
Okay, please call a vote.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye. Thank you. Please read item 1636.
Amend accounting procedure and financial management policy and procedures for services performed for private persons or governmental agencies and for inter-departmental services.
Second reading, call a vote.
Adams?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye. Please read item 1637.
Authorize a five-year price agreement with Bound Tree Medical LLC for emergency medical supplies and materials as required for emergency responder services for an amount of $1,825,000.
Good afternoon, Mayor Potter, Members of City Council. I'm Jeff Baer with the Bureau of Purchases. And before you is a request to execute an agreement with Bound Tree Medical Supplies, Bound Tree Medical, to provide an annual price agreement for emergency medical supplies on behalf of the Portland Fire and Rescue Operations. And we did a, conducted a competitive solicitation process, evaluated the responses we received for, and Bound Tree was the highest scored proposal. They are all in compliance with our, they have current business license, EEO certification, and in full compliance with our equal benefit requirements. And I'll stop there. If you have any questions, glad to answer those.
So why is it for five years?
It's, it's an annual price agreement with five annual, one-year incremental renewals so that we can do a price agreement and renew them on an annual basis.
And there's no, this is an ESP. Is it located in the city of Portland?
No, they're out of, I believe, Ohio. We did not receive any, any local responses out of the four responses.
And no certified, no M or W certified firms?
We're still developing our supplier diversity program, and so we don't have that fully fleshed out yet. And at that point, we will include those requirements.
Is that because this is so big that they?
No, it's because this is part of our goods and services requirements. And, you know, for construction, we have it, and professional services, we do. Goods and services is our last area that we're developing.
And it's, so this is something that with the standard notification, we can stop this contract?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Is there anyone signed up to testify on this matter?
I did not have a sign-up sheet for this.
Is there anyone here who wishes to testify to this specific issue? Please call a vote.
Adams?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye. Please read item 1638.
Authorize a contract with Scott Fogarty, Doing Business as Friends of Trees, for professional urban forestry services for the Gray to Green Urban Canopy Project, number 8986, and provide for payment.
Mr. Adams?
Well, this is just a, a great day, great opportunity, and I think I've already kind of introduced it with the earlier discussions.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor Potter and Commissioners. We are very excited to bring to you this PTE contract with our local nonprofit, Friends of Trees, for tree planting services under the auspices of the Gray to Green Urban Canopy Effort. As you well know, the larger Gray to Green Effort aims to make a significant investment in Portland's green infrastructure for the combined purpose of improving water quality in our rivers and streams, reducing the burden on aging gray infrastructure, and providing a mechanism for Portlanders to be actively and directly involved in the solution by saying yes to trees and other green infrastructure in their communities. In addition to cleaning up our streams, Gray to Green will provide a suite of complementary benefits: improved ecosystem health, improved public health and safety, improved community strength and livability, and reduced reliance on costly gray infrastructure while providing nonprofit and private sector jobs. In this way, Gray to Green will be an efficient and effective effort that is good for Portland's economy. The Urban Canopy Peace will plant more than 80,000 trees over the next five years. Under this contract, Friends of Trees will put their 20 years' worth of community building and tree planting expertise toward the challenge. 2009 also marks the state of Oregon's 150th birthday. To commemorate our sesquicentennial, state urban and community forester Paul Reese has proposed a tree planting challenge to Oregonians. With the Gray to Green Effort underway, Portlanders are well poised to meet the challenge. Thank you.
Questions? Is there anyone signed up to testify on this matter?
We have 15 people signed up.
It's maybe a trivial question, but I'm just curious why we're doing this to Scott. Nothing against Scott, but it says Scott Fogarty, Doing Business as Friends of Trees. I mean, that seems kind of unusual when we give, we're giving the award to the 501(c)(3), Friends of Trees. I'm just...
To be honest, I'll have to defer to that question because that wasn't how the ordinance was written.
Maybe Scott can answer that. I have a hunch he'll be up here. Okay.
Is there 15 people?
We do.
Please call up the first three.
The first three are Scott Fogarty, Ray Espña, and Lynn Knox.
Because of the shortness of time, I ask you folks to keep your comments to two minutes or less. And when you speak, please state your name for the record.
My name is Scott Fogarty. I'm Executive Director, Friends of Trees. And Commissioner Saltzman, I cannot answer that question. When I saw it on the agenda today, I kind of was surprised as well.
Do you have a full-blown board of directors?
We do, absolutely. We are a 501(c)(3).
I think this is a city attorney question, not to take against your time.
Yeah. I, I think that's just a mistake in the title. The agreement itself is with the organization, not with Mr. Fogarty personally, DBA.
That's good to hear.
If I could make a correction, we took the title off of the agreement where it says it's contracted with Scott Fogarty. The Friends of Trees wasn't in here, but your business license says Scott Fogarty, Doing Business as Friends of Trees. That's why the auditor's office put it. Because that's what the contract says, is Scott Fogarty.
Okay.
If there's a correction to this contract, we could make that.
Okay, well, let's hear the testimony then.
I'll start the time over.
Ben says it's not a problem.
Okay.
Not a problem. Good. That's good to hear as well. I'm here today to recognize...
Thank you for donating your house to this.
I think it's not worth the price of the contract, but...
Now your time begins.
Yeah, okay. I'm here today to recognize and applaud, I, well, forgive me. Good morning, Mayor Potter and Commission members. My name is Scott Fogarty. I'm the Executive Director of Friends of Trees. And I'm here today to recognize and applaud your and the city of Portland's commitment to helping clean our environment, providing green jobs, and helping build our economy through the Bureau of Environmental Services' Gray to Green Initiative, specifically the Urban Canopy Peace. We are pleased here to be today with our partners from the Bureau, as well as with Verde, NEA, the Urban Forestry Commission, Portland Parks and Recreation, Portland General Electric, and others who are supporting these efforts in increasing our urban canopy in the Portland metro region. Through the Gray to Green Initiative, we are excited to build on these existing partnerships and strengthen them as part of a unique public-private partnership we have with the city and various bureaus in the city. It's important that we support our local government efforts that recognize the incredible economic, social, health, and safety values that the urban forest canopy brings us to the citizens of Portland. Often, we hear stories of, from folks who have planted trees with us over the past 20 years who feel a sense of pride and community ownership in making a great difference in the city. People walk, bike, drive, and commute past their trees and watch them grow, sharing with their friends and families and their children and the positive experiences they've had. Through this initiative, Friends of Trees will energize tens of thousands of volunteers and educate them about the numerous benefits of urban trees. It will reduce millions of gallons of stormwater flow over time. We'll plant tens of thousands of trees, and thus increasing our beautiful urban forest canopy. We will leverage nearly $4 million in private, individual, corporate, and foundation funding. We will create hundreds of green jobs specifically for our minority communities. And we'll provide hundreds of superfund planting events on wet, cold, beautiful Portland days. We specifically thank Mayor Lex Sam Adams for his foresight and recognition of the values. 30 seconds, please. And the benefits of growing our urban forestry place for our city in the long run. I would specifically, Mayor Adams, thank you. Also, Dean Marriott of Bureau of Environmental Services for helping steward this. And to James Allison and Jennifer Carps, who I've been working with many hours directly on this effort. Again, thank you and the Bureau for their stewardship and leadership, and thank you for your time and commitment to this. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Potter, Mayor Lex Adams, Commissioner Saltzman, and new Commissioner Fish, Ray Espña. I'm the Community Development Director for NEA. And it's both an honor and a blessing to be here with you all today in the time and with my friends and colleagues in the audience who support the contract and the project. And it's really one of celebration and Thanksgiving at a point in time. I'll just make four brief points, and one is the engagement aspect of this activity allowed communities of color, specifically native communities, to really engage. And we owe that support to Mayor Potter and the Office of Neighborhood Involvement in terms of some of the diversity, training, and community organization. They gave voice to community members, and it led to better community organization and action. It's also an opportunity to talk about equity. And as we've been talking about green, I think communities of color have kind of been left maybe off to the side a little bit. So really, for me, for myself and other community members, it's really one about equity, that our communities will not be left behind as we go from gray to green. We will not be marginalized, and I think the celebration is that we feel that we have been at the table and work with partners to make that investment. And purely it's about economics. It's, it's job creation, it's providing livable wage jobs. And in working with the city, it provides opportunity and training to create business opportunities, enterprise, and jobs, living wage jobs. And finally, I think it's also a fitting testimony to our involvement as indigenous peoples that we care and heal our earth. And this is another way of us making a contribution back and as well providing a very important service. So with those words, I appreciate your time this evening.
Commissioners, I'm Lynn Knox with the Bureau of Housing and Community Development, the manager of the Economic Opportunity Initiative. I'm here today because we have collaborated with VES in bringing Verde into the Economic Opportunity Initiative as a green jobs project... Opportunity Initiative as a green jobs project that is really a hybrid for us. We usually have either microenterprise or workforce projects, and this is both. And that's really exciting because for the first year, we'll primarily support the business development side of Verde to build the capacity as an organization and as a social enterprise to be able to increase its workforce, build a nursery, and provide the trees and plant the trees as part of this major wonderful effort. So we are here to commit ourselves in terms of some funds from the Economic Opportunity Initiative and our support to them in leveraging all of the other resources that are part of the Economic Opportunity Initiative so that the workers they hire will be on career tracks and moving forward in a very positive way in their lives. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, folks. Please call the first three.
They'd like to come up two at a time as they have an interpreter who'd like to sit with them. The first two are Pedro Moreno and Jesus Nares Jr.
Thank you for being here. When you speak, state your name for the record, and you each have two minutes.
Buenos dias, Señor Tom, Commissioner Sam, Commissioner Dan, and Commissioner Nick. Ah, mi nombre es Pedro Moreno y soy de Mexico.
Okay, I think I'm gonna translate. My name is Pedro Moreno, and I'm from Mexico.
Yo vivo ahí en la comunidad de la calle Cully y Kilisworth.
I live in Cully and Kilisworth, northeast Portland.
Vivo en los apartamentos de Hacienda, ahí te veía clara vista, que pertenece a la hacienda.
The hacienda apartments?
Por nueve años he vivido en esa comunidad.
I've been living there for nine years.
Y estoy aprovechando la oportunidad que Verde me da.
And I want to take this opportunity and the opportunity that Verde gives me.
De aprender más sobre el medio ambiente.
To learn more about environment?
Tengo con la compañía Verde trabajando dos años.
I've been working for Verde for two years.
Mi trabajo consiste en manejar una camioneta.
My, my job is, I'm a foreman. I drive one of the trucks.
Donde yo llevo las cuadrillas a trabajar a diferentes partes de la ciudad.
And I take the employees to work in different places in the city.
Del trabajo consiste en quitar plantas invasivas.
We remove invasive plants.
Como es la blackberry, la ivy, y la snowwee.
Such as blackberry, ivy.
Que actualmente están invadiendo a los ríos y a los lagos.
The species that are invading rivers, lakes.
Y gracias por escucharnos.
Thanks for your time.
Y gracias a los amigos de Tree.
Thanks to the Friends of Trees.
Hola, mi nombre es Jesús Núñez.
My name is Jesús Núñez.
Vivo in Portland.
Vivo, ah, sorry, I live in Portland.
Ah, soy de México.
I'm from Mexico.
En un trabajo, tengo un año trabajando en Verde.
And I've been working for Verde for a year.
Y yo creo que este programa es importante porque ayuda a restaurar el medio ambiente.
And I think this program is really important because it helps restore the environment.
Como plantando, plantando plantas nativas.
Working native plants.
En diferentes partes de Portland.
In different places in Portland.
Y también, y también removiendo plantas invasivas.
And removing invasive plants.
Y también este programa a mí me ayuda como teniendo asegurança y buen salario.
This program and working for Verde gives me benefits and a good salary.
Y por mi parte es todo, y muchas gracias por invitarnos.
Thank you very much for having us here.
Y considerando el contrato con los amigos de los árboles y Verde.
And for considering this funding.
Thank you. Call the next two.
The next two are Jose Velasco and Jesús Núñez.
Thank you for being here today. When you speak, state your name for the record, and you each have two minutes.
Hey, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Jose Luis Velasco.
Good afternoon. My name is Jose Luis Velasco.
Soy de México también, pero tengo buen tiempo en los Estados Unidos. Disculpe, estoy un poco nervioso.
I'm a little nervous. I'm from Mexico, and I've been in the U S for many years.
Tengo tres años trabajando en la compañía Verde.
I've been working for Verde for three years.
Soy el foreman hasta ahorita.
I'm one of the foremans, foreman.
Lo bueno que me gusta de Verde es que hace algo bueno para el medio ambiente.
What I like about Verde is that we do something for the environment.
Y me ha tocado la oportunidad de trabajar en trabajos de los, bueno, de los suelos de la ciudad.
I had the opportunity to work on biosuelts all around the city.
He aprendido mucho con James, he trabajado con James and Dennis, y esta otra persona ahorita Laura, y nos ha, nos ha enseñado mucho que es un, para qué es beneficio todo bueno.
I've learned through folks from the city like James, Laura, and Dennis, to know more about biosuelts and...
No sé más decir, pero muchas gracias y espero que consideren este trabajo de amigos de los árboles.
Thank you so much, and thank you for considering funding this program.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Jesús Núñez.
Good afternoon. My name is Jesús Núñez.
Vivo en el este de Portland.
I live in east Portland.
Soy originario de México.
I'm from Mexico.
Tengo dos años trabajando para Verde.
And I've been working for Verde for two years.
Les agradezco nos hayan recibido.
Thank you very much for having us here.
Y darnos la oportunidad de escucharnos.
And give us the opportunity to...
Este es un aliciente para mí, seguir dando el entrenamiento y educando a la comunidad para proteger el medio ambiente.
It's very good that we could communicate the community about the environment.
El estar aquí con ustedes es para mí un compromiso, para trabajar con más fuerza.
Being here gives me, motivates me to continue working hard.
Gracias a Verde.
Thanks to Verde.
Para tener a la ciudad de Portland.
And the city of Portland.
El estado de Oregon.
The state of Oregon.
Más limpio y más verde.
Cleaner and greener.
Gracias por invitarnos y escucharnos.
Thank you for having us here.
Gracias por considerar el contrato con Verde y la compañía de amigos de los árboles.
And thanks for considering funding this contract.
Gracias por creer en Verde.
And thanks for believing in Verde.
Thank you. Please call the next two.
The next two are Mateo Fietes and Carlos López.
State your name when you speak, you each have two minutes.
Te digas tu nombre, en voz alta, tienes dos minutos.
Mi nombre es Carlos López, y soy de México.
My name is Carlos López, and I'm from Mexico.
Yo tengo dos meses trabajando para Verde.
I've been working for Verde for two months.
Y nomás lo que quiero decir que Verde ayuda a la comunidad a...
All I want to say is Verde helps the community to...
Para los trabajos, para, por mi cuenta, me ha dado un trabajo que quiero aprender más sobre la, sobre la plantación de...
For giving us training in different plants.
Y muchas gracias por recibirnos y...
Thanks for having us here.
Y considerar el contrato con los amigos de los árboles.
Considering this program.
Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias.
Hi, my name is Mateo, and I've been working with Verde three months ago. When I first got there, I didn't realize all, all, all his programs, and I didn't know that much about all this kind of work, and right now, I'm excited to work with them, and I want to do the best that I got with me, and I want to keep all the opportunities that they give me to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next two are Nestor Campos and Nicholas Moreno.
Thank you for being here, folks. When you speak, state your name for the record, you each have two minutes.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Nestor Campos.
My name is Nestor Campos.
Tengo tres años trabajando para Verde, desempeñando distintos roles.
I've been working for Verde for three years.
Uno de mis roles es educación a la comunidad, producción de plantas nativas.
I'm in charge of production of native plants.
Supervisión de aplicación de herbicida para control de plantas invasivas.
And provision and application of herbicides for native species. I mean invasive species.
El Verde es importante apoyar porque ha sabido combinar dos aspectos importantes, que es preservación y mejora del medio ambiente, y por otra parte, oportunidad de la comunidad.
I think it's good to support Verde because we give, inform the community.
Y preservación del medio ambiente.
Preserve the environment.
Personalmente, Verde me ha ofrecido estabilidad laboral y la oportunidad de adquirir nuevas habilidades.
Verde has given me professional opportunities and opportunities to learn more.
Y, y la habilidad, oportunidad de adquirir nuevas habilidades. He adquirido dos, dos certificaciones gracias a Verde.
I'm certified, or I got two certifications.
Gracias a Verde.
Thanks to Verde.
Estamos trabajando conjuntamente con otras organizaciones en pro, en favor del medio ambiente como amigos de los árboles.
We're working with other organizations like Friends of Trees to help the environment.
Y bueno, gracias por la oportunidad y considerar la posibilidad de los fondos para este proyecto que nos va a beneficiar a todos.
Thanks for having us here and for funding the program.
Thank you.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Nicolás Moreno, y vivo en el, vivo en el noriz de Portland.
Mi nombre es Nicolás Moreno, y vivo in northeast Portland. I live in northeast Portland, sorry. I'm not a professional translator, so it's not, it's...
I think we got what you meant.
Yo soy una de las personas más nuevas que entraba a esta compañía Verde. Tengo unos días, y no sé mucho de, del proyecto que se está llevando a cabo. Yo únicamente les digo de que tengo un hermano incluido en esa compañía, y me ha comentado los beneficios.
I'm the newest employee in Verde, and I've, I've heard from my brother who works for the company, or the organization, about all the things Verde does and the benefits.
Que cuida el medio ambiente.
For the, that we take, take care of the environment.
Por ejemplo, sembrar plantas y árboles.
Like planting trees and plants.
Es lo que más me motivó a estar ahí en la compañía.
That's what motivated me to join the organization.
Muchas gracias por recibirnos.
Thank you very much for having us here.
Es como les dije la primera vez, yo tengo poco tiempo y no sé mucho a estos avances que se está llevando a cabo. Gracias.
I don't know a lot of things, but I'm learning. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next two are Dora Reyna and Ellen Hippolyo.
What was the other name?
Ellen.
Buenas tardes a todos.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Mi nombre es Dora Reyna, y trabajo con Latino Network.
I work for the Latino Network.
Y estamos ubicados en el cincuenta y uno veintitrés, North Michigan.
Our office is right there.
Cincuenta y uno veintitrés, North Michigan. Y por lo que hoy estoy aquí es por la conexión que tenemos con la organización Verde.
I'm here because we have a strong connection with Verde.
En los asuntos relacionados con el medio ambiente y en el trabajo y la conexión con la comunidad.
On environmental issues and working with the community.
Latino Network recibió fondos del D C L, Diversity Civic Leadership.
The Latino Network received funding for the D C L, Diversity Civic Leadership.
Esos fondos son provenientes de la oficina de Neighborhood Involvement.
The funding comes from the Office of Neighborhood Involvement.
Donde hemos tenido la oportunidad nuevamente de colaborar con la organización Verde en un programa llamado Puentes de Paz.
Where we had the opportunity to work with Verde in a program called Puentes de Paz.
Donde estamos llevando diálogos en conjunto con la policía.
We're having dialogues with the police.
Y los residentes de latinos del área.
And the Latin community in the area.
Esos fondos recibidos nos han abierto grandes oportunidades.
The funds have opened doors, given, given us opportunities.
De tener conexiones, por ejemplo, con organizaciones como Center for Intercultural.
To have connections with organizations like Center for...
Intercultural, Oregon Action, N A, Urban League. Y es por eso que estoy aquí para agradecer a todos ustedes.
And I'm here to thank you, everyone.
Los esfuerzos de apoyar esta participación diversa.
The esfuerzos? The support for this diversity.
Participación diversa.
Participation, diverse participation.
Y esto ha generado grandes beneficios en la comunidad.
And this has given a lot of benefits to the community.
Mejorando la calidad de vida.
Mejorando?
Improve...
Improving the...
The quality.
The quality of life, if you can do it better than I do.
You are so good.
Ma'am, you're, you're, you're over your time, so you have to wrap up. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk here today. My name's Alan. I live in the Woodstock neighborhood. I serve as Executive Director for Verde. As you've heard, together with the Latino Network, we're a recipient of the Diversity and Civic Leadership Grants from ONI, and this support has helped us be here today to share information with you about our work and our community. We're an environmental justice organization. That means we try to connect low-income people to the benefits of environmental protection, specifically the economic benefits. And so we do this in two ways, social enterprises and through outreach. So, social enterprise, like a goodwill, like a rebuilding center, we start environmental businesses that employ and train low-income people. We have a landscape operation, and then we have a startup nursery, and we're collaborating with N A now to develop an energy-related business. And with outreach, we share information with affordable housing communities, community development groups, environmental groups, and with governments about how to build the connection between protecting the environment and creating good jobs for low-income people. I can't say really enough good things about this opportunity that's in front of all of us today. I can't say enough good things about our partner Friends of Trees. Because of their leadership, our landscape operation will have a chance to plant thousands of trees throughout the city, and our nursery will greatly expand, and we'll be able to hire and train a lot more low-income people. And it'll also allow us to bring new environmental assets, new trees, to affordable housing communities throughout Portland, and at the same time as we do so, we can educate And at the same time as we do so, we can educate the residents of those communities about why the trees are there, how they benefit the environment, about the connection between protecting the environment and making a good living. And we can build stewardship. And what we do today is a start that we really want to celebrate and we look forward to working together with our partners in the city, Greater Green, to create more green jobs for more people in more communities in all the different sustainability initiatives we're going to be advancing in this city. We want to be a part of this future. We all want to be a part of this future. And we foresee a time when disadvantaged communities advocate in ever greater numbers for environmental policies precisely because these policies create more jobs and meet their daily needs. And we foresee a time of greater partnership between environmental groups and disadvantaged communities because collectively we can achieve things that we couldn't achieve separately. And this will make a long-term difference in environmental conditions on the ground.
Thank you. Thank you.
The last two who signed up are Tony DiFallo and Marcus Monday.
Thanks for being here, folks. When you speak, state your name for the record and you each have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Tony DiFallo. I'm a resident of the Colley neighborhood. And I just want to say how excited I am to be here today and applaud you all for your foresight and vision to create this opportunity. There's a strong movement starting to sweep the nation now that addresses the triple bottom line of environmental protection, sustainable economic development, and equity. And this contract realizes that triple bottom line in a meaningful way. There are, the Toyota Corporation recently gave a $20 million grant to the Audubon Society to start to connect these three triple bottom lines. And I was the recipient of a fellowship, one of only 40 in the United States, to receive a fellowship of $10,000 to start a program in my community. And I have chosen to work with Verde to help create Verde Energy, which will connect low-income Latinos and Native Americans to do green sector, green energy sector jobs such as weatherization or energy efficiency of commercial or residential buildings. And I've seen the folks that got up here today and presented to you. That's what it looks like. Green job creation, meaningful, well-paying jobs for some of the most vulnerable citizens of this community that live below the poverty line. Connecting those folks with environmental protection, something that the environmental movement has largely kept them out of for a long time. And creating that connection is something that we can't, you can't downplay in any way, shape, or form. So I just want to thank you all and thank Verde, Friends of Trees, and lend my full support to this and let you know that I'll be bringing those dollars from Toyota and Audubon to the table to help expand that program and use that model for future projects. Thank you.
You.
My name is Marcus Monday. I'm with the Urban League of Portland and I'm here today in a role of support. Thank you for letting me speak to you gentlemen today. I support the work of Verde. I support this opportunity for Friends of Trees. The Urban League of Portland is a fellow recipient of the essential Diversity and Civic Leadership Grant that this administration put forth and hopefully the next administration carries forward. The partnerships we forged with Verde, Naya, ERCO, Latino Network, the other recipients have been critical in our learning on how to do a better job in civic engagement. And as we go forward, I encourage you to continue to embrace projects like the one with, like this one with Verde and Friends of Trees, as well as some of the fine work even by BCHD, the EOI project. We're a recipient of that as well. So the work that's coming out of the city is critical, critical to getting more people involved in the process. The demographics, as you know, of Oregon and Portland are changing. This project and the many others that I hope will follow it are important because they inculcate these people who, people like our communities who have been not full participants before. And the economic benefit to these populations and the city will be immeasurable. So, thank you very much. I think your consideration of this effort reflects well on the work you're doing. And I'm in absolute full support of Verde and have a great Thanksgiving holiday, gentlemen. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monday. Thank you for the work that the Urban League does for our community. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
That's all who signed up.
Okay. Please call the vote.
Thank you. Feliz Dia de Gracias. Si.
Well, I'm pleased to support this ordinance and the contract. As the Housing Commissioner, we have two relationships with Hacienda. Lynn Knox alluded to one, which is to our Economic Opportunity Initiative. And the other is they are one of our great nonprofit housing partners. And the work they've done in Colley Concordia speaks for itself. So I am very pleased to see this union of affordable housing and green jobs and giving opportunities to low-income people. I think it's both an innovative concept and gives us a roadmap to the future. And I'm pleased to vote aye.
Saltzman.
Well, I'm excited about this contract with Friends of Trees because it will get 83,000 trees planted over the next five years. And that's very exciting in of itself, but it's also very exciting to see Verde playing such a significant role in this effort. And I think Alan Hippolyto is being very modest, but he deserves a lot of credit. I think Verde was largely his inception and his hard work to make it, to bring it to where it is today. And I think it's poised, Verde is poised to grow and to provide good jobs and to help our environment. So this is a, this is a great contract for those two reasons and I'm pleased to support it. Aye.
Potter.
Well, this has so many good parts, so it's kind of hard to figure out which one you'd want to focus on. But obviously, the thousands of trees that are planted in Portland are really important. I really value Friends of Trees. I've got a number of trees in my own yard that Friends of Trees helped me plant. So I really appreciate the work that they do. Appreciate Verde, Naya, and all the good people who have graduated from the Civic Leadership Academy. And if I were a teacher today, I would give you all an A for your performance today. Thank you very much for that. And thank you, Scott, and all the good folks back at Friends of Trees, and I vote aye.
Please read 1639.
Rename the Portland Office of Transportation to the Bureau of Transportation.
Mr. Adams.
Well, this is a ordinance that has no fiscal impact. We'll be making the changes as vehicles come in for regular maintenance, as stationary runs out and needs to be reordered. But the truth of the matter is, is that we need to make clear to the public who is the provider of transportation services for Portland City Government and the city of Portland. I recall taking over as Transportation Commissioner and going to the Stanton Yard Building. And the sign out front, which was about four by three, said Department of Public Works. That department had not existed in the city of Portland for about 18 years. Then as you're out and about and the public sees the various city vehicles, they might see on the side of it a vehicle with the name Office of Transportation. They might also see something called the Office of the Director. They might see something called the Bureau of Transportation Engineering and Development or Bureau of Transportation System Management or the Bureau of Maintenance. It's incredibly confusing. I waited three and a half years to bring this forward because I wanted, to a certain degree, be an expression of the internal work that we've done to consolidate the transportation operations and to integrate them. We have still work to do, but we've come a long way and long enough that the name change seems very important. So from here on out, PDOT will be known as the Bureau of Transportation or BOT. And with us is one of the key leaders of the Bureau of Transportation, John Rist.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. John Rist, for the record, just here for any questions. The Commissioner stated it very eloquently.
You know, my only reservation is in the past five months, I've gotten used to the acronym PDOT. Now I have to reiterate, but as we make
Bureau of Transportation.
As we make the move from PDOT to BOT, we might want to make the move from BDS back to Bureau of Building. There is something about simplicity here. Thank you, sir.
So the Bureau of Maintenance will now be Bureau of Transportation?
Maintenance Operations.
Correct.
Also, since you're here, you all know that PDOT's been going through a rolling fiscal crisis and we stole John from a suburban organization. And since you've been the Chief Financial Officer for Bureau of Transportation, you've just done a fantastic and incredibly difficult job. So it gives me an opportunity to publicly thank you in front of the city council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. No further questions. Is anyone signed up to testify on this matter?
I did not have a sign-up sheet for this.
Is there anyone here who wishes to testify to this matter? It's a non-emergency, moves to a second reading. And the council will help Commissioner Adams with his lunch.
Sorry.
Please, please read item 1640.
Authorize a grant to Portland Impact to help fund the building of a new community park at Marysville Elementary School.
Is there any staff on this? To explain?
This was Commissioner Leonard's.
Does everybody feel comfortable?
Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to just say a few words. I mean, this, this project at Marysville is a collaboration between Portland Parks and Recreation, Merrill Hirst University, Portland Public Schools, and I believe Dames and More. And it's a really good project and I appreciate Commissioner Leonard, his hard work in the budget process to provide significant money to do the construction improvements, to basically build a brand-new playground, state-of-the-art playground in an area of southeast Portland that can use this. So it's great, I think.
Just go to a second. Anyone sign up, testifying?
No one signed up.
Emergency, it's an emergency. Please call the vote.
Adams?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Commissioner Saltzman wishes to pull the next five items. Do we need to read each item?
We need to read, yes.
Actually, I'd just like to set them over one week.
Excuse me, set them over one week.
We do need to read the titles. 1641, amend and extend term of right-of-way agreement granted to AT&amp;T Wireless Services of Oregon Inc. to build and operate wireless facilities within city streets. 1642, amend and extend term of a temporary revocable permit granted to LCW Wireless Operations LLC to build and operate wireless facilities within city streets. 1643, amend and extend term of temporary revocable permit to Clearwire US LLC to use the city streets to provide wireless broadband internet access services and establish terms and conditions. 1644, amend and extend term of right-of-way agreement granted to Sprint Spectrum LP to build and operate wireless facilities within the city streets. And 1645, amend and extend term of a right-of-way agreement granted to Voice Stream PCSI LLC, now known as T-Mobile West Corporation, to build and operate wireless facilities within the city streets.
Any objections from any commissioners to having it set over until next week?
Is that just so?
No, it's absolutely the opportunity for us more to highlight some of the changes that we've made in our tower siding policies that are embedded in these agreements. And we want to sort of preview that all for the council, let them know. So I think we should be happy.
So ordered, please read item 1646.
Authorize settlement agreement and acceptance of deeds to property located at 7115 North Lombard Street, currently owned by Donald R. Campbell and Alice M. Campbell.
Good morning, Mayor. Commissioners, Gary Black, I'm a Portland City Auditor. With me is Marco Maciel, who is our City Foreclosure Manager. And very occasionally, he appears before city council, which is a good sign, meaning that we've been working through a large number of properties over the last number of years to collect outstanding liens. And we have the power of foreclosure, but we have not had to use it. This is another case where foreclosure isn't necessary, but it requires an act of council. Marco has worked with all the property owners to resolve the code violations related to their liens as well as work with Bureau of Development Services to negotiate payment of what's to the city of Portland. And to this date, he's collected over $2.8 million in outstanding liens, most of which goes to the Bureau of Development Services. This is a piece of property that had a large number of violations, 23 liens against it. And we worked with the city attorney, with the Bureau of Development Services, with facilities to determine the value of the property relative to those liens and ultimately negotiated with the property owner to accept the property in lieu of the liens. So the first step we need to do is to get council approval for this agreement. We'll take the property, clean the property up, and sell it. And the proceeds will come to the city for the sale of the property. So we're here for any questions you may have.
Could you describe the property again?
A vacant lot. It's a vacant lot on 7115 North Lombard. They had a property, their house, that for lack of care, we had to go many years ago and demolished the property, what was in place, the improvement. And so became a kind of dumping ground that has been a big nuisance for the neighborhood. I have been there talking to the neighbors and has been a constant problem for us since 1987.
So it's at 71st and North Lombard?
7115, yeah.
It's a vacant lot.
It is a vacant lot.
And I have not gone through this process before. So could you tell us just very briefly, what's the normal protocol for disposing of the property?
This for us is a first experience in terms of acquiring the property as a surplus property and having a facility selling the property. So we are receiving, the deed is going to be turned to us and the facility will take care of the selling the property and the proceeds will come to the city, meaning to BDS and us, to cover the costs that we have incurred so far.
And are there any criteria that govern the process of sale? For example, has council in the past put any social utility goals on disposition of this kind of property? So that you first have to see whether, for example, there's a nonprofit that would take it and develop it for some use or whatever.
I think that's something that could be brought up with the Bureau of Facilities once we acquire the property. But at this stage, we need to clear the property off and prepare it for sale.
So because it's late and everyone wants to go to lunch, if I could just ask that, once we've taken this action, if we could get, each of us just get a report on the property? And I think it might prompt a lively discussion about what we would do with disposing of properties like this in the future. And I might, for example, want to talk to my colleagues about whether we set a hierarchy of uses that we might use as a template in the future, including parks, open spaces, affordable housing. From time to time, we've had discussions about the need to site city facilities in different locations. So there might be, I think, an interesting discussion we could have about that.
Sure.
Thank you.
I think we might have such a hierarchy in place, but
There has been in the past, the city, when there is a public use for the property. We do have used in the past that, in many instances, we used to hand the property to some nonprofit organization. When it is a property that can be used for, like what we heard previously here, like Hacienda to come and build some projects, but this is just a lot in between two other properties that there may be someone in the city who has an interest in an institution or a bureau. I personally don't see how we would be able to utilize that for public purposes because of the location. It's a commercial location that has also residences around and has been a problem for the neighborhood. That's how BDS has been constantly going back there.
I will follow up with you on that.
Sure.
Other questions? Thank you, folks. Is there anyone signed up to testify on this matter?
No one signed up.
Anyone here who wishes to testify to this specific issue? Ben, would you like to testify?
Just joking, Your Honor.
Give him one minute.
This is a non-emergency, moves to a second reading. We're recessed until 2:00 PM today.
Thank you.